Good morning. Time being 9:05, we will get going this morning. I would welcome you to the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Advisor Committee Budget Presentations Meeting. And would first of all like to invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome those that are joining us virtually today. I'll just take a moment to introduce the Board to you. My name is Gary Daniels. I'm Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Next to my left is our Vice Chair Chris Labonte, Selectman Paul Darji, Selectwoman Laura Duziak, Selectman David Freel, and at the table up front here, we also have Town Administrator John Shannon and our Financier Director Paul Calabria. Now I'll turn it over to Chris Pank to introduce the Budget Committee.
Good morning. My name is Chris Pank. To my right is Karen Mitchell, Wade Campbell, Mike Thornton, Peg Seward, Vanessa Sheehan, I can't see Paul Calabria, and I can't see down that way. Okay, Kevin Hunter. Turn those two around, it's hard to tell. Claudia La Mer will not be here, but she will be joining us via Zoom.
Thank you, Chris.
Our first appointment this morning is with the Town Clerk Joan Darji. Morning, Joan.
Good morning. For our budget, let's see, we'll start with the elections. Basically, the changes on the budget on the elections are that we only had one this past year and this year, and we're going to have three next year. So basically, the amounts are times three. One thing on the budget that I did want to point out, that somebody had a question on at one of the budget meetings, was postage on elections. And the postage went up on elections because we had to contact 2,700 voters who were on the checklist who had not voted in the last four years, and basically see if they still lived in town, and approximately 2,200 were removed after that exercise. So that postage wasn't spent on absentee ballots, it was spent on notifying all the voters to see if they're still here or not. On the Town Clerk's, the rest of my budget, which is related to motor vehicle vital record and elections processing, the only difference on that is basically adding $10,000 to a part-time clerk in the office. That approximately comes out to an additional eight to 10 hours a week. The need for that is that we've, our motor vehicle revenue has gone up about 25%, 20% to 25%, and our activity number of transactions has gone up 15% to 20%. And that's basically the major change. Oh, and the one other is on the postage for motor vehicles. Again, we're doing a lot more mailing of registrations versus having people come into the office. Anybody have any questions?
Questions? Peg Seward?
Oh, Joan, I was wondering, since I just thought of it when you said, you know, voting. On the Voters Guide, which hopefully this year will get sent out, who pays the postage on that? Does it come out of you guys or administration?
The Voters Guide, we don't mail them out.
What is the answer?
It's not in my budget.
Okay. That's all I want to know.
Mr. Labonte?
Joan, my other question was, and just to refresh my memory on it, was it last year we combined part-time positions into a full-time position at the Town Clerk?
It was one of the part-time positions that we combined into a full-time, yes.
And now we're adding another part-time?
Not another part-time, adding hours to my part-time position. We already have a part-time.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, just to make sure I understood that.
Yeah.
Other questions? I have a couple, Joan. You mentioned that the vehicle registrations were up 25%. Last year was kind of an anomaly. How are we on registrations versus the year before?
It's the same. It's, yeah, I'm comparing to 2019.
Okay. And I know that...
And actually, oh, sorry, Gary. And actually, last year did go up from 2019.
Okay. And I know that you and Mr. Basalia have been talking to the Ballot Law Commission about possibly getting a new voting machines. Is there any cost to that?
There's no cost.
No cost, okay.
So the vendor is basically loaning us all the equipment for the testing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions? None? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And so we'll go into recreation. Irene Berry?
Good morning, and thank you for having me. I'll just real briefly go over the differences between the proposed budget and the 2021 adopted budget. First, on page 105, under wages and part-time. The park ranger position was eliminated last year, and I have asked to have that reinstated for a total of $6,580. Also have a $4,000 increase in lifeguard wages. This will be my ninth summer with Key's Pool, and it'll be the first time that those lifeguard wages have increased since I've been here, and it's sorely needed. And then on page 107, there is a $250 fee for State of New Hampshire Annual Compliance Self-Cert certificate that is for the pool. The State of New Hampshire has revised their pool rules, and we need to do a self-check, and there's a $250 fee for a certificate I've got to file for every year now. And the only other thing to note is the general supplies has gone down $1,000 because we purchased pool tents for the pool deck last year. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Any questions for Irene?
I do have one.
Mr. Labonte?
Irene, do you expect any higher expenses doing to, we have the new bus now, obviously, which you're able to use, meaning, I assume, does that get run out of this budget? Or how does that?
The bus was not, the bus was purchased solely with donations and fundraising, and the expenses for the bus will come out of the revolving fund, revenue from trips is being set aside for bus expenses.
Okay.
And for bus number two.
Gotcha.
Irene, how are we doing filling the position? Did we find someone?
I'm sorry, I can't...
Oh, I'm sorry. How are we doing filling the position?
So for those of you who don't know, I'm running solo right now. Program Coordinator has moved on to another position somewhere else. He left at the end of October, and there were 16 applications. I've chosen six to interview, and I finished those interviews on Wednesday. I anticipate making an offer in the middle of next week. I'm doing reference checks right now.
Could you explain to the general public that may be listening how that position is paid for? Because I think that's very important.
Both the wages and the benefits, 50% comes from the town and 50% comes from the revolving fund.
Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you. Going to put up an ice rink.
Moving right ahead, at this point, we should be done by noon. Is Lincoln?
I don't see him yet, sir, but we are...
Okay, 20 minutes ahead of time before he's supposed to be here, but if you'd like, Paul and I can go ahead and go with this topic.
He's in the building.
Lincoln has entered the building.
Morning.
Morning, Lincoln.
You're up.
I say...
Share one, I'm sorry.
Is the revolving fund specifically a recreation?
Yes.
Specifically recreation?
Fire chief is doing it.
Say 30 to 40 line items. It allows us to do some things during the year. Make many asks.
Thank you, sir.
As far as the lifeguard increase, you couldn't kind of like...
She needs a break.
Yeah.
She wants to increase the salary of lifeguard that hasn't been increased in, I think she's at 50 years.
Still want, want to?
Green is on, red is off.
Morning. Chair recognizes Lincoln Daly, our Unit Development Director.
Well, thank you. Good morning. I'd like to present the 2022 operating budget for Community Development Office. And then I'll proceed into what is handed out this morning is our two items that were not included as part of the submitted schedule, but I would like for BAC and BOs input related to additional, possibly one more additional employee or position, and to discuss vehicles within the department itself. So I'll first begin with presenting some of the highlights or changes within the operating budget. I believe that it starts on page 43, is that correct?
That's correct.
The first item is under wages, it's under the Planning, Operating Budget, Wages, Part-Time and Temp. You'll see a decrease of about 49%. That's because we had some shifts, shifting within our reshuffling within our department. The Jerry O'Connor, who is our, was our Land Research Agent, was moved up to the Ministry of Assist position within Billing Department, and that Land Research Agent position was not replaced. That's the biggest change, that's why it changed so drastically. If you go down to Purchase Services, again on page 43, under GIS Engineering and Support, there's an increase of $1,000, $8,000 to $9,000. This is to reflect the continuing demand for GIS-related services, and what that means is we hire a company and also hire a company to actually work with the town and also have interns work with the town to develop geospatial information, such as locating our water and sewer pipes and having them represented geographically for us to utilize for replacement and also maintenance. There was an increase from $14,000 to $18,000. Similar to the wastewater treatment facility, we are also under a federal permit for managing stormwater, and it's a 10-year permit, and we are required to maintain a certain level of requirements and respond to the permit itself. And this is to be utilized, hire consultants to work with the town in compliance for that On page 44, there was a slight increase to publications and ads, and that's just to reflect the increased costs of postage. Turning to page 46, under Zoning Operating Budget, really hasn't much, wasn't much change to this, other than just a slight increase, again, to postage to reflect the cost and increase in cost of postage. And then moving on to the Building Department, on page 48, there was a, under Wages and Part-Time Temp, I worked with Paul Calabria, there needs to be some subtle changes done to that to reflect some requested increase in hours for two employees of two hours apiece. So it would make necessary changes to reflect the actual slight increase of that total amount. I think that's it for presentation for Community Development Office. It really hasn't much changes since last year, it's been pretty static, minus those two, a couple of changes we've kind of discussed right now. Any questions on the budget?
Mr. Labonte?
I guess, starting where you had ended up, basically, on, and maybe this is more of a question for Paul Calabria, I'm not sure, on your Buildings and Health Opera budget, your wages and part-time one there, your 21 budget, you had 72,991. You've expended a date 49, or call it 50,000. I guess, Mr. Calabria, are the expended numbers accurate?
Yeah, the expended numbers were accurate as of...
The date that it was printed, I assume, okay. So I guess, seeing, I understand we still have almost, I'm going to say, two months left, a month and a half left. What is your changes that's going to bring you up? Meaning, obviously, you appear to be underneath what you have budgeted now. Do you foresee that being a big expense between now and the end of the year on part-time wages?
I actually have a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry.
On your wages, your part-time, your building and health, currently, you have expended out of that just under $50,000, correct?
Mm-hmm.
You have budgeted almost $73,000, if I'm reading it right, for 21? Do you see, I guess, a big expense? Meaning, you're looking to go back to 73 again, I guess I'm looking at, it's just a question, are your part-time expenses higher towards the end of the year, generally, or...
It's a great question to ask, Chris, and what we try to do is to provide flexibility in our department for part-time employees. So as the demand for services increase, we have enough money budgeted to maintain a level of service. And I do anticipate this coming pretty close to the 72,991. And this, towards the middle of this year and towards the end of this year, we are seeing a slight slowdown in the billing activity. However, we're trying to be responsive as much as possible, flexible as much as possible in case there's a higher demand for services. So it may fluctuate, it may not reach that full amount, but I think we should be prepared to provide a level of service and have the hours necessary to pay our employees to actually respond to that services, those demand for services.
And my second question would be going back to page 43, under your Other Professional Services you were talking about. Current year budget, you have $14,000, to date expended $1,339. Once again, is the same question, I guess, to that, is there normally a big expenditure in the end of the year, or seeing as, you know, you haven't even expended 10% of your budget, but yet you show an increase of 28%?
Yeah, we actually fully expect to expend that in total $14,000. We're currently engaged with our consultant to assist the town in rewriting our stormwater regulations in compliance with the MS4 permit, so we fully expect to expend that entire amount of money.
And I assumed you had a plan, I just wanted to verify with you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Other questions? And I'll go on to the second part of the discussion.
I had a question about CIP. Has that been approved, and where are we in that process?
Oh, good question. We anticipate going for the Planning Board for adoption, probably on December 2nd. We found out recently there was a discrepancy in one of the projects that affects the overall schedule of the CIP, that we need to have the community revisit and then present that to the Planning Board. But we have a draft form, which I can circulate to various parties here today, and discuss if necessary before the group at another meeting.
Further questions? I do have one. At our last board meeting, we talked a little bit about a proposal to combine with Amherst for a grant to extend sidewalks from Amherst down to Sawhegan Street area or beyond. Part of that was to possibly look at the infrastructure that's underneath, and if we were going to do that project, then possibly include that work in the grant. My question is, if we were going to get into that, do you have the resources to look at that underground infrastructure within the budget here, within your budget?
I think the answer to your question would be, we would rely upon our current information that's on file right now through the various projects that have occurred recently, but also past projects. I think we have a pretty good sense of what's under the ground, but as we all know, when you start digging, you may discover things that weren't necessarily mapped. So I think that's a better question to ask the new DPW Director, to see if he has resources to actually investigate or whatnot. But as for the planning and zoning and building, we rely upon existing plans and utility plans to identify and locate underground utilities.
Okay, and further, would you expect that if we were to apply for that grant and be awarded that, that we could, if there was an extra cost to looking at that underground infrastructure, that that could be part of what the grant would pay for?
Yeah, definitely, yes. Well, I can't speak to the terms of the grant, because I have not seen the application or the terms of how they're going to fund it, so I can't, I want to speculate on whether I can apply for it. I know your discussion with Amherst and also the recent board meeting, it was asserted that the funding could be used to repair not only just the service, but in the sidewalk system, but also utilities and infrastructure underneath the ground also. So it's something that we can reach out to Amherst to better understand the financial mechanism that would fund this project, but in talking to the previous DPW Director, I know it would be a very expensive endeavor just for us to go, do it by ourselves.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Yeah, so the second part of the discussion is two items that weren't necessarily part of the schedule for this year, but I want to get your sense, possible support for moving this forward in some capacity. The first of which is to, we're working with the Fire Department, we're requesting a full-time environmental and health officer to respond to the growing demand for health and environmental related services and community programs. And the role of the health officer has kind of ping-ponged between Community Development and Fire Department for a number of years, and right now is landing in the Fire Department's kind of purview. And working with the Fire Chief, it requires a lot of time, a lot of dedicated time for to do investigations, inspections, all the administrative follow-up that's associated with this, and also developing community-based programs to respond to such things as COVID and other types of pandemics. So this position would have a critical role within our department, within our town. They focus on three various areas. One is enforce applicable regulations. And they would basically inspect, common things they would actually inspect would be is restaurants, foster care, any nuisances such as odor, pests, infestations, mold, housing conditions. So play a critical role in ensuring that we have a safe environment for us to work, live, and play in. They also serve as a liaison between state, local, and officials and local residents on issues concerning local environmental public health. They also become the leader in developing community-based programs and improving communication about health-related issues within our community. And speaking with the Fire Department is that the individual would be incorporated in opposite Community Development under its own department, Environmental Health Department, and then supported administratively by my staff within Billing Department. If you turn on the second page of the handout, it basically provides an estimated cost for We anticipate probably this would, total annual cost of $103,000, which includes the salary, benefits for a family, and the various related training and safety and other departmental expenses. If we adopt the model, the fee schedule from the state, is we estimate that we'd earn about $30,000 in revenues per year. Again, following the model of Manchester Dairy in Nashua, we feel that we would be able to subsidize this position via grants, by the New Hampshire Terrible Foundation is one of them. And lastly, is this position would require a town vehicle to conduct inspections and also site visits. Any questions so far about this?
How are all of these things currently being accomplished? If we're looking for a brand-new position, we must be doing some of this now, and how do we do that?
Yeah, right now, this role is on a part-time basis, and is done by the Fire Chief and two deputy health officials. They're going to ping-pong back and forth, and Building Department and Community Development work parallel with the Fire Department on health-related issues. And one example is, we had adopted a building that needed to be investigated for health-related issues, and we teamed up the Fire Department to perform that, perform that role. Unfortunately, I, Fire Chief will probably speak to this later on, he may appear before you later on today, is this requires a dedicated amount of time, as resources are needed elsewhere, and this person would fill that role on a full-time basis. And not only do the inspection portion of this, but also develop the community-based programs and improve communication about health-related issues within our town. So it's probably being done by the Fire Department, but I think he would actually state that the depth needed to, this is a full-time position and not a part-time position.
Mr. Darji?
Yeah. Regarding the grants, you have a comment that says the balance of salary and departmental expenses would be paid via grants. Do you anticipate this being just like initially to get it started, and then the grants go away, or are these going to be an ongoing expense?
We're hoping to utilize grants to fully fund this position going forward. Due to the timing of grants and timing of this process, year one may need to be funded by the town, that balance may need to be funded by the town. So we apply for grants as soon as possible, but most likely, the cycle of grants won't happen until early next year, sometime after March. But it would be an ongoing process to find grants to support this.
Yeah. How confident are you that these grants will come into play?
Yeah, so Manchester Dairy and other communities have applied for similar grants with the Terrible Foundation. They receive substantial amounts of money for their health departments, and I think we follow suit with them and apply for the similar grants. And the $30,000 is just projected estimate, it could go up based on additional inspections, and we haven't gone through the entire fee schedule, the $30,000 is just based on restaurants and food processing alone, not daycare and other services.
Further questions?
Gary? So I just want to say, I'm a little bit leery on, you know, planning on a grant coming in. I would almost bank, I think we should be planning on, the grant doesn't pay for it, and that this is going to be impacting the town. Do you feel like if the grants don't come through, that we will be maybe assessing fees to the local restaurants or the people that are going to be affected by this position? That, you know, so maybe additional permit fees or whatever, and that the town businesses will have to pay for this?
Yeah, great question, Dave. So the role of inspecting restaurants, for example, is actually done by the state right now. And in talking to the Fire Chief, there is a gap and disconnect when they respond to the request for inspections and whatnot. This would speed up that process by having a local official to self-inspect the various businesses. It's already required by state law to do these health inspections for restaurants and food processing, which is basically bring that service to the local level and improve the, expedite the return on that permitting process.
And I don't believe that, I mean, I believe that additional inspections is... And I don't believe that, I mean, I believe that additional inspections is going to make it better for everybody. But I wonder if it's possible, instead of having one full-time employee, to have a couple of part-time employees where you're not maybe paying out on the benefits, allowing you to have two people. So if one person goes on vacation or one person is out, then you have two people trained for that position. And I'm just wondering if that was ever thought about versus, you know, the benefits on this are almost, you know, 25,000 bucks. I mean, that's a planned on, you know, budget, and that could go towards training two people. And then I'm just wondering, you know, it'd be almost better having two people, almost like, you know, if one of our inspectors is out, we have a backup.
Yeah.
So I get that if this person was to get sick or have a leave of absence for some reason, that the fire department, I would think, would pick back up and maybe cover it. But I'm wondering if that was, if any thought was put into two part-time positions.
That's a great question. Al, the comparable would be is our building department. And we are extremely fortunate to have within our, for our inspectors, a very talented and experienced group of individuals. The challenge was trying to find these individuals. That was the biggest challenge. And we'll explore every option possible, part-time, full-time, so long as we provide level of service that serves the community. I just, initially, the full-time individual is continuity, and the probability of hiring a full-time versus two part-time is a little better. And we experienced some frustration in trying to find part-time individuals to fill these roles. So it's really based on what we can, the quality candidate that we can possibly get and qualified individual move forward with this. That's a good question, I appreciate it, good question. But we'll explore every option possible.
Okay. Mr. Dodgy?
Yeah, a few years ago, we used to have Mr. Elkind, and he did some of this work.
Yep.
And he left, and we didn't replace him, correct?
That's correct.
Since then, have we not been doing various environmental activities? What have we lost out by not having someone that's ready and able to do that kind of work?
Yeah, Mr. Elkind was our environmental coordinator for many, many years, engineer by trade and experienced environmental individual. He was our go-to person for all environmental questions, stormwater management and whatnot. And with his departure, it left a big gap. A part of the functionality was, and relates to the health component of this, was inspections of septic systems. And that falls the responsibility of the fire department now. And I've had the pleasure of going on many calls with Chief Flaherty to examine blown-out septic systems. But that role is currently being done by the fire department right now. And the stormwater, we outsource that now to a consultant. And so the responsibilities of Mr. Elkind have been absorbed by other consultants and/or other individuals within the town. And so this, if we're allowed to move forward with this, is that individual would take on the role of inspecting septic systems, for example, and other mold, sewage issues and whatnot that are currently done by the fire department.
So do you anticipate savings by not subcontracting the work?
To some degree, yes. I think it's also equally important to understand that Chief Flaherty wears many hats, and his resources are, the resources that are required are dedicated towards this position, again, for the inspection, administrative component of this and the follow-up, takes a lot of time. And I think, maybe he might agree with this, is his job function should be dedicated elsewhere, not solely focusing on or part-time on environmental, on the health component of the town.
Mr. Panti?
Would that also replace a stormwater management consultant, as Slukman-Dargi was saying? No?
Different role. The stormwater consultant is more engineering-based. This looks at more the health component of like mold, infestations and whatnot. Their capacity for environment for, deals more with the septic-related issues than stormwater management.
So going back to your savings, it's going to be more of a time saver, like you're saying, on other departments, but yet the expenditure is going to be higher on the burden for the, meaning for the budget.
If it's fully funded through the various programs, I think it's going to be net neutral to the town. I think it actually might be a savings to the town if we're able to, again, fully fund this through other means. But it's really trying to decide what level of service for the town. That's what it boils down to. If you want to provide this level of service, it may cost initially cost the town some money upfront.
Thank you.
If we want.
Further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Yeah, last one, sorry, Gary, last one, involving the community development vehicles. Right now, we have two vehicles within community development office. We have a 2019 Jeep Compass and a 2006 Ford Explorer. We found out that the Ford Explorer may need to be replaced within one to two years. Both vehicles are used heavily, extensively by the community development office, primarily by the building department for inspection and special services. When not being used, on the records, is not being used by the community development office, they are also used by other staff members within the town hall itself for various business-related activities. We'll need to replace that within one to two years with a new vehicle or repurposed vehicle. We don't care. It's a reliable vehicle that we can use, so the staff can use to get to and from inspections. Lastly, is if a environmental health inspector is added to the department, this will also require a third vehicle to support that individual's need to do inspections in the town. So I say this now as a precursor to what may be added down the road, not asking for vehicles today, but we'll maybe come back next year for a discussion involving up to two vehicles for next year. Great, thank you.
I haven't got it in front of me, but are these vehicles listed, your existing vehicles listed on the vehicle list?
Yes, they are.
Okay, and do you have logs to show what would need to be replaced when you talk about the Ford Explorer?
We do.
Instead of just saying that significant repairs, precisely what those repairs are?
We do, yep, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Further questions?
Lincoln, is it possible, again, with police, new vehicles, that they can donate one to you?
Yeah, heck, I explored that and also explored, primarily explored the use of DPW vehicles also. Talking to Captain Frye, their current fleet isn't, he was hesitant to provide us with a vehicle, given the current state of those vehicles. And I think this kind of speaks to a larger kind of discussion about vehicle replacement and kind of developing a hierarchy of how to repurpose vehicles after a period of time. Ideally, is we would acquire a police vehicle after they retired in their end, and then we'd continue using it until it basically dies. But my understanding, their fleet isn't in that state right now, and they're unable to provide us those vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none?
Great, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce here.
I see.
Bruce Dickerson, we're from Information Technologies. And we'll be on page 34.
First of all, I want to thank you all for all the time and effort you put in. It's an often thankless job, and I appreciate everything that you have done and are doing to help run our town. It really makes our jobs a little bit easier, which is very helpful. Thank you. The IT department has two major areas where the budget has gone up. The first is wages. I was able to hire an assistant after a lot of years of not really having one, and it has worked out tremendously. That assistant came in at a higher price. The first round of interviews we did didn't offer up anybody that I felt was able to take over this position. I got in contact on my own with a person I had worked with previously, and he came in. He used to work here via microtime, Randy Appolito was his name, and he was able to jump right in right from the get-go and start helping me out. And he's been great ever since. It really has worked well to have that extra person in the department. It has allowed us to start upgrading the infrastructure, the IT infrastructure, which has been needed for a long time, and we're in the process of doing that right now. So that added benefit was a 10% increase over what I had anticipated for our wages for the coming year. So that's the first big area. The second is mainly in software support. I have Munis, which is our financial package. That is by far our biggest, largest software support. We pay, right now, we're paying them over $50,000 a year to keep our system up to the latest versions and running properly, you know, technical support questions. They go up 4.5% every year without fail. And it's a cost that we have to bear.
That's his number.
We've, I've seen other towns try to change their financial package, and it usually is two years of misery and very expensive to do so. So we're pretty well locked into Munis and have no choice to keep going forward with them. That's one of the main areas of increase. I've added a couple of small pieces to the support. The police department, the fire department was paying for their own, well, it's called Public Eye, which allows their fire trucks to access their software from their fire trucks. They had been paying for that originally, but we felt that it would belong more in my area than in their area, especially with the personnel changes over at the fire department. The other big area of increase I threw at the bottom of mine is, was $13,000. Lincoln and I have been talking about is a cloud-based permitting system. We were bouncing that back and forth, and he had come up with a cloud-based system that would handle all of their needs, the building inspectors, as well as people inside and customers as well. We're sort of on the fence about that now. The cost for it came in pretty high. It looks like it's going to be about $50,000 to implement. We tried to use the Munis permitting system, and it was just a miserable failure. It was very frustrating, didn't work well. So Lincoln ended up finding this system, and we're sort of waiting until the end of the year now to see if we have enough money to go forward with this. But the annual cost for that would be about $13,000 a year. That's about it. Those are the two major increases, areas of increase, I should say. Otherwise, we're going to be moving forward IT-wise, improving the hardware and software infrastructure over the next year.
Thank you. Any questions for Bruce? I guess I would just have one. I take it that of all these things, let me, first of all, compliment you on, you recognize us for the time that we put in. Your job is one of those that's kind of in the background, but it's really amazing when we look back at the connectivity we have gained in town over the year, and that is directly related to what you have done, as well as what Chris and Andy and his crew have done in making things available for the public to be able to see things and do things, particularly virtual, but to connect all the departments together that we've been working on for some time. Thank you for all that. I presume that through the list you have given us, that there's nothing there that we can do with open source?
Open source is just what it is. It's, you get what you pay for. There's generally no support for open source, and to implement open source would take a lot of training on the user end, which could be counterproductive. If you, and I've looked at open source a lot, there, mainly when you purchase, and you do end up having to purchase, support for open source. It really doesn't come down to, it would be difficult to implement open source. And in bits and pieces, we could probably do it, but it's something I do keep my eye on. And if I find something that I think is worthwhile, you know, I will utilize something like that.
Okay, thank you. Further questions?
I had a question about the current federal bill that was passed on infrastructure.
Mm-hmm.
Do you anticipate, or can you look into a crystal ball and say, we may be getting some money to help with our 5G technology?
Okay.
What are you hearing?
Yeah, 5G is different, I believe. 5G is more cellphone.
With cellphone?
Yes. Infrastructure would be for, they call it the last mile, and actually, Chris could probably speak to this better than I can.
Okay.
Chris? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so the bill that's currently in there is more for cellphone usage. It's also for the extension of broadband further out, so where places where cabling or fiber cannot reach because it's just not cost-effective, they are creating kind of like hotspot areas for it. The 5G would be more of either tower, or they would set up a, kind of like a tower inside people's houses type of thing.
So it wouldn't be for us being able to run more fiber in the community?
It would not.
Not that particular item?
No, no.
Thank you.
I did put in for ARPA funds to run fiber, to the water treatment facility. I would love to run fiber all around town.
Absolutely.
But for the most part, they limited it, well, they emphasized water treatment and plants and facilities. So one of the ARPA requests that I put in for was for, I believe it came out to be about $150,000 to run fiber from town hall to the water treatment plant, yeah?
Where's our fiber right now?
I have fiber from town hall to the fire department, the library, the police department, and from the police department to the ambulance department. So little by little, and we've been trying to work fiber into, you know, getting everybody connected. Right now, that would be, the longest run would be to the water treatment. So if we could get the ARPA funds for that, that would be absolutely tremendous. Then I would like to connect DPW as well as the other towns, buildings. Other than that, that's where our fiber is right now.
Possible that when roadwork... Is that this?
No, the truck outside.
Is it possible that when roadwork is done, or any time of water mains are opened, we at that time put fiber in the ground?
No.
Because most of the labor is already being expended?
That's not up to me. If I can get the funds, it wouldn't be underground fiber, it would be aerial fiber from here to all of the buildings. But that is roughly the cost that I anticipate for that. So if we could get the funds, sure, I'd run it right away.
Further questions?
Yeah, I have one. You have two line items in here for Tyler Munis, $47,000 and an $8,500. Is the $47,000 just a classical perpetual right to use?
Correct.
Get you new versions when they come out? And the other one, are you contracting specifically for support?
No, the other one is for, yeah, they call it, yes, it's for the updates and the upgrades and the calls, but technical support, they break out separately.
That's the $8,500?
Yeah, mm-hmm. I know, they try to make it look like it's less, but it's crazy how much we end up paying to them. Well, I shouldn't say it's crazy, I mean, they do a good job with it. They really do. But they handle, you know, municipalities and towns and schools throughout the country. So they have to be well-versed in each state's laws and things like that as well. So it is a very difficult job to keep everything up to date in their, from their point of view.
I'm curious, what was the original acquisition cost of the software, just in comparison to the $47,000?
I wasn't even here when they got it. I think the original cost, because we... I think the original cost, because we had looked at it when I was doing contract work in Lunedary, the cost for it would have been about $200,000 to $250,000.
Yeah, I was going to say even maybe even double that, classic.
I would, I have not looked at the price, yeah. It's, yeah, any kind of financial package like that is going to be very expensive, and it's going to be a very, very long and painful migration process to move it from one to the other.
Are they kind of the, the big player in the market?
Yes, they pretty much are.
So you don't really have a lot of choices?
I'm sorry, what?
Don't have a lot of choices?
No. Not a lot of choices at all.
Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none. Chris, you want to?
Yeah, Chris?
Sure.
Yeah. The community media budget that you have in your packet, I believe it's on page nine. Not much of a change there. We do have one change now. Keep in mind that the salaries and wages is 15% of my salary and benefits. There is no part-time, it's just 15% of mine. The services are basically the website itself. It's basically to take care of anything that has to do with our online presence. The only change is rather recent. We got something to archive our social media accounts for write-to-know requests and of the sort. That is very recent. That's about $2,500 a year, and that's pretty much the only significant change in this. Like I said, that's rather recent, so I don't believe it's in your current books. But other than that, we just, that's for me to take care of the website, social media accounts, and anything that has to do with our online presence.
Questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Shama.
Thank you very much.
Marty? Marty is online. We'll recognize our town assessor, Marty Noel.
Got a little pissed off there. Good morning, everyone. Need to address the assessing budget found on pages 32 and 33. I mean, focus this year, of course, was finishing the reevaluation for 2021. With that being accomplished, the budget itself is generally down.
Marty, we've lost your volume.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The tax mapping, tax map changes and updates shows a slight increase that because their annual fees gone up a little bit, it also covers the way or on the map for building things. And in 2021, we put a lot of into town, and so those are going to be reflected onto the maps and a charge on a per-building basis or addios. So there is a little bit of an increase there just to cover that sort of thing. Dues and memberships, I built in just a small increase because these things tend to go up a little bit every year. Recording fees is down now that we're two years into the new Laredo system that the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds uses. I can see that initially I thought it would be a large cost to printing deeds. For the most part, we're, we do pretty well as the deeds are provided, and I preserve them into our own server, so we don't need to go back to the registry to print deeds and plans as much as I thought we might have had to. I'll get back to travel and mileage in a minute, and the only other increase is office supplies. I seem to really run up against that every year, so I bumped it up. It says 25%.
We, we've again, the volume is coming and going. So we can't, can't hear you at all. Marty, can you hear us?
I can hear you just fine. Can you hear me?
No. No. It's, it's in and out.
I apologize, but I'm getting the same sort of feedback on my end from listening, so I don't know what to say. Must be in my computer, and I apologize for that. I'm trying to speak up. I have checked all my plugs, they're all plugged in. Are we, are we good now?
You were, yes.
Okay. Do you have any questions on my budget before I get into travel and mileage?
Any questions on the assessing budget? I see none. Go ahead and continue.
Okay, so for travel and mileage, I don't use my vehicle at all. The only travel I do is for meetings in Concord. I haven't added anything in there for that because most of the meetings have been via Zoom, and I expect that will continue well into the year next year. However, I do want to add to what Lincoln said earlier about needing new vehicles. I am a heavy user of one of the, there are two vehicles there. One, one vehicle is used almost exclusively by the building inspector. Their vehicle. When that vehicle is out, none of us can do our job. But it's very important that we do have a reliable, say at least, it is, sometimes it is unsafe to use my own vehicle when I'm out doing work. The environment today is a little bit crazy, and I will not be out there without a vehicle
It's the internet, it's unstable. Because I can't get on Zoom yet, I had to latch on to my phone.
And, and so that's what...
So Marty was agreeing with Lincoln's point earlier that she also needs access to a, to a car, so that was what she was trying to get across when she, she keeps coming and going.
Recording in progress.
Okay, I don't know what that is, but anyway, so her point was the same one...
Were there any questions?
Her point was the same one Lincoln made, just to kind of sum that up for you, because I know it was popping in and out.
Yes, questions?
Chief Flaherty had made a recommendation to the CIP about a shared-town motor pool to consolidate requirements and maintenance and vehicle replacement. Might that be an idea to bring forward?
Mr. Shannon?
Yes, sir. We're looking into different ways we can do that. We've collected all the, we've collected all the... We've collected all the information on the, well, minus like, you know, bulldozer and stuff like that, but all the rolling stock people would actually drive around it, things with wheels. And we're collecting, we're looking at that now, so, but again, they're not asking for a vehicle this year, it's just more to, it's just like the, the EHO officer is to kind of put you on notice, it might be something we're looking at down the road, you might see in a budget pretty soon. But now, that doesn't leave out that depending on what surplus is, saying things might be encumbered by the board this year, but I'm not going to speak to that right now, we're just...
Marty, it's Chief Flaherty, can you hear me?
Oh, there he is.
One moment.
Yes, I can hear you.
Chief Flaherty, you recognized? Gary. Okay, Marty, I don't know if you can hear us or not, but we can't hear you at all. I think probably as far as if there are any questions with your budget, we'll have to get together and talk, talk with you about that later, because the, the audio is not acceptable. We can't, we can't hear anything. So at this time, I think probably we'll, we'll just discontinue the, the assessing part. I don't know if there are any further questions, but if, if there are, please write them down, maybe send, send them to the town administrator so that they can be asked of Marty, and we can all get the answers to, to those questions from Marty.
So...
Yeah, I, I guess we're all, for right now, Marty, there seems to be a difference of opinion as to where the issue is, whether it's with Town Hall or on your side. But I think the best thing to do, just in the interest of time, is just to continue forward, and we will follow up with you with any questions that we might have. Okay, at this time, my understanding is that Lisa Emerson, our welfare director's on the way, but in the meantime, Karen Blow, a human resources director, is with us. So we'll recognize Karen.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning. My budget basically is fairly flat. The few things...
Forty-one.
Pardon me?
Forty-one. Page forty-one.
He just asked what page it was, it's forty-one.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Are we all set? Okay. My budget basically is fairly flat. The one thing that will be driving it will be any increase, staff increase, that the voters and the board recommend, and the voters approve as far as the 3.5. The things pertaining to my, my section of it has to do with the health trust rate increase, which is going to be 8.1% for the medical, and there is a 1.5% decrease on the dental. The life, short-term and long-term rates this year, we're in the third year of a three-year agreement, so there's been no increase or decrease on those. Those will go out to bid next year, and we'll take a look at that. One of the things at the end of this year and into next year, we're looking to do a wage benefit survey in 2022. We've heard from the three companies, well, we've, we've heard from three companies so far, and the cost estimate is to be between, again, 15,000 to 40,000, depending on number of positions, you know, that we ultimately determine we're going to put out there, et cetera. The RFP is in the process of being drafted and will go out within the next month or so with the language to be contingent on the passing of the warrant article in April 22, or if the board approves from funding from the surplus at the end of the year. So those are the two things that, you know, would be, would be supporting that. And the manpower study is still in process. Nothing really, like I said, my, my budget itself is, is pretty flat. Are there any questions?
Questions from Marty, excuse me, for Karen? Seeing Mr. Dodgy?
Did I understand you correctly, you're proposing a warrant article for this, this study?
That would be something that Mr. Shannon and I would probably put forth if we aren't able to get the funding from the surplus at year-end.
Okay. Further questions?
Just a question. What would the study accomplish? What's the end goal of having this study done?
Just to determine, we, we have a high turnover rate with our truck drivers, laborers. We have a high turnover. We, we've just kind of come off of quite the turnover with our water utilities department. There've been, you know, some adjustments made, but we want to make sure that our rates are competitive, that within the municipal sector, that we are remaining at least competitive with, you know, surrounding communities. And that's just basically, you know, the, the gist of it.
Do you personally do exit interviews to determine why individuals are leaving?
Yes, I do.
And what is the overwhelming reason people are leaving? Is it salary, benefits, commuting, all of the above?
Well, it's a conglomerate, you know, it's multiple reasons, but wages ultimately do come up. Of course, we can't compete with Nashua, we can't compete with Manchester, they're going to be much higher as far as their wage, you know, wages are. And depending on the position, I'm trying to think, we just had an officer leave in the police department to go to Merrimack. While the wage was a little less, they, the insurance paid it 100%, you know? So there's a variety of factors, and, and it would be a wage and benefit survey. It's not just on the wages. It would be looking to make sure that the benefits that we're offering, you know, are comparable, again, with, you know, our counterparts and, and that, you know? The best thing is retention. That's going to essentially save the town money, is if we can retain the individuals that we have, and we have, you know, some longevity, and, and that's one, one other thing is, in the, in the upcoming years, you know, we have individuals who may be retiring. They're, they're at that point where they may, may be some vacancies coming up within the next, I'm going to say, two to four years. I think the last time a wage survey, benefit survey was done with the town was in 2005 to 2010 range. So it's due, it's timing. I've adjusted it incrementally as I've been here, but I think it's prudent to, you know, do something like this at this point.
And do you, do you work with the department heads in the community to update job descriptions? So when there is a position available, we have a current job description, how does that work?
Yep. Basically, one of the things I ask department heads to do annually when they are doing their evaluations with staff is to have the job description there, and basically at that time, ask the staff member, you know, has your job grown, has it shrunk? Because they may be assuming more tasks than even the department head realizes, because they're, you know, looking at the higher level and whatnot. So have that, have that discussion, and then basically bring that back to me. We look at it, tweak it if need be, and then, you know, adjust accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions, good questions.
Karen, I just had a quick question. About two years ago, I think it was, Mark Bender, when he was administrator, looked at all department heads in the state, and we had even a printout of all the salaries of department heads in the area, and according to that, he ended up increasing some wages, right?
Yep.
Was that information paid for, or isn't that from a municipal association or something?
That was from NHMA. So basically, that's one of the resources that I utilize when I do a survey, wage benefit, a wage survey, excuse me, not benefit, wage survey. So I'll look at NHMA, but there's only a limited number of towns that are responding to that. So if we can, you know, and that's one of the things, to have a dedicated company looking at this and reaching out to hopefully more communities, providing us with a larger data pool.
So you would probably send a survey directly to the town and ask a response?
The individuals doing this would send it to the towns, getting their response, accumulate the information, and then basically present it to Mr. Shannon and/or the board if, if that was a decision they wanted.
Because I wonder if the municipal association would pay towards that? Because, you know, there's going to be other towns looking at the same thing.
Yeah. Normally, what I've seen since I've been here is customarily, I think this year, Goffstown or Bedford is doing one this year. Last year, there were a few other towns doing it. So it's a couple of towns do it each year. We try to include everybody in on that. But again, depending on whether or not the town participates, they may not get the results of it. But the HRs really try to work together, you know, as far as if we send out surveys, responding. But it's not the breadth that I would hope that an agency would be able to accomplish.
Okay, thank you.
What are the towns we normally compare ourselves to? Because obviously, we can't be compared to Nashua.
Correct.
So what are the towns? Are they local, are they statewide?
It would be, again, a combination. We want them to be within that 15,000, you know, plus or minus on either end. We want them to be geographically, you know, in the area. And, you know, so there are multiple factors on that.
And would a company do that for us?
Yes.
One last question, if I might?
Yes, you may.
How many of our employees in town actually live in town? Do you know?
Oh, that's a good question, and I would have to get back to you on that one. I don't have that right off the top of my head.
Because to me, that speaks a lot to the, what I'll call, the inability to get volunteers in the community. If people who work in the community don't live in the community, they don't necessarily have a commitment to volunteering in the community. So that would be an interesting thing to find out if I could.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know we're down volunteers in the fire department, and I know we're down big-time volunteers in the recreation department, so.
Yeah, Chief Flaherty and I have had conversations about that. And, you know, he's having a real tough time right now as far as the volunteers.
We all are.
Yep, absolutely.
Mr. Barbalmuji, if I could just ballpark it, looking at the insurance information we got yesterday, it looks like right around 50%?
Excellent. Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your questions. And if there's anything, please let Mr. Shannon know.
Chair will recognize Lisa Emerson from welfare.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Hello.
Okay, this is my first time, so go easy on me.
I think it says victim on that.
It does, I like that.
Page 101.
So, I really don't know what I'm saying. What kind of questions do you have for me?
You want to tell us a little bit about your budget, first of all?
So, well, okay, I sure can. The budget has decreased from last year, being that a full-time staff member retired and part-time took on. So the wages and salary has gone down. Others were adjusted accordingly. And I think I just tightened up some of the other items that I noticed we just weren't needing to spend on, office supplies and whatnot. As far as the actual services to our residents, again, I just tightened some things up. So overall, there was a decrease. Looking at the numbers from 2019, our distributions were half in 2020 and 2021. And 2020 may have been an anomaly because of the pandemic and because of the funds that were available. And right now, we're seeing an increase because of evictions, the eviction moratorium being lifted. And we're seeing, we are seeing more seniors affected with the cost of just living, food and gas and rent. So our town is changing, the demographic is changing, and landlords are raising their rents. So we may see a change overall in the number of people coming for assistance. So I think it was spot-on to go from a full-time to part-time employee in that position, being me. And just overall, looking at the budget.
When you say the town is changing, are we saying that you're anticipating more needs within the community?
Not really.
No?
No, that was sort of the caveat, was the town is changing in that the rental properties are meeting a market rate of rents that are higher than they have been in the past.
Right.
And I think that just brings in a different type of consumer.
We see a need for fuel assistance for seniors this year, where the price of heating oil, propane, et cetera, has...
Yeah, and I can't attest to the increase or decrease in that, but we do work closely with Southern New Hampshire Services, which provides the fuel assistance.
They provide it?
They do the qualification and then the distribution of the federal funding. We, in the welfare department, we, actually, I share office area with the Southern New Hampshire Services Fuel Assistant rep, and that is the first resource I direct our residents to. Yeah, while assisting them in applying for food stamps and helping them check their, because it's open enrollment right now, so we check to see what type of advantage plans they can help with. Because so many of the advantage plans now do offer more transportation and better prescriptions. So we do what we can.
Questions for Lisa?
Uh-oh, what have I done?
I had a question. What federal or state grants do we get to help with this program? Has that been increased at all, or do we have money coming in?
I'm not aware of any. I don't know.
So your department just...
Vanessa, can you move the microphone closer?
So your department kind of directs people to different organizations that they can get help through? Is that what you do?
Yes, we certainly can. We can also go through a qualification process where if there's a need for the emergent housing, food, heat, or medications, they can qualify for assistance through the town's offering. Or we, again, we work very closely with the SHARE outreach organization.
Okay, yeah.
So not many people walk out of my office having been denied. They walk into SHARE, and they usually get what they need for those basic needs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dodgy?
Do you have any workfare requirements? Like if someone is coming in for needs, assistance, do you have them do public service of some kind?
Yeah, that's a very good question. Since I have been there, however, it's been the pandemic, and so we have not been able to offer them any workfare hours. But we do offer if they need, when recreation needs assistance, they're always there. But so many of that is requiring a physical task. And many of our clients on disability just can't do those tasks, so. I have kind of, and I've talked to Mr. Shannon about this as well, and we've, I will allow certain work hours if they've come in to help with SHARE because we work so closely with that organization, if they're volunteering and helping with the spaghetti supper, or if they've, we had some folks go through and clean up gardens. The Nemo Foundation had their fundraiser, and some folks were involved in that, and also Boy Scouts. Because I feel that they're helping the community, that they're proud of their community, and they're thankful and grateful to their community. So they give up their time to community events like that. So if you have any suggestions, any ideas, we have found that working in the past, time that they've spent at the transfer station has not always gone well. So we have tried to be creative.
But is it kind of a policy that you require people to do workfare if they're able?
If they have become either financially able, they do offer monthly or a one-time payment to repay the assistance provided, or they can put in hours at a time, yes, when they are able.
Have a question, Lisa. As far as those who are needing assistance, there are so many places looking for workers right now. And they're willing to be quite flexible on whether it's part-time, full-time, things that they can do just to fill in the gaps that they're not able to fill. What would be the main reason why those who are seeking assistance could not go into one of those jobs?
From A to Z, I really don't have an answer, a one answer for that. We have medical reasons, mental health issues, family dynamic issues, death, kids needing to be out of school because of COVID and COVID scares. So sometimes we can direct them to COVID help. We have seniors that just can't get to the end of the month and pay even just their easy, you know, their basic bills. I don't know. The list can go on and on. There really isn't any one answer. I do have requirements, and there are, we use a software program that allows me to, when a decision is made and the resident has received assistance from the town, that there are conditions. And I can really make them very specific, I can make them very general. But if it's someone who is employed, I require that they seek employment and show me on a spreadsheet who you've talked to, what the conversation was about, what's your follow-up? Because to the point, this is the taxpayers' money. And I think I represent the taxpayers and holding them responsible for that, so.
Do you have employers that contact you looking for people?
No, and I don't want to be that kind of a, I don't want to be that. And it's the same thing with housing. Folks call all the time to the office, you know, I'm about to lose my housing, can you help me find one? I can only direct them to the resources. The state has a wonderful new, has wonderful employment office. I direct them there because they're the specialist. We have New Hampshire Housing Authority, I direct them there. I can't be that. I can't be mental health to someone, I direct them to Greater Nashua. I don't think the town wants me spending time helping someone find a job or...
On the other hand, if you've got somebody that is collecting assistance and they're out saying, oh, I can't get this job or this job, they may be applying for jobs that they're not qualified for or that they can't do and therefore would be turned down so they can continue to get assistance as opposed to an employer that calls in and said, I'm looking for somebody and, you know, I don't need an awful lot of requirements on this. And I don't know if they would get that through employment security or not. I'm just wondering if we're missing an opportunity.
I get your point. I don't know that the town wants to be the voice to suggest a resident to be hired and then that resident not turn out to be a good hire. That's on us, then. If I'm suggesting Bob Smith for a job, and he steals from the company, hey, the town told me to hire you. I don't think we want that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Daniels, could I just add on to what you were saying? I'm not sure, I'm not sure if... I don't think Mr. Daniels was looking to say for us to back someone for a job or to help them with a job search. And correct me if I'm misunderstanding, but if we had, if employers knew they could contact the town, your department, and you had a running list of availabilities, would it be something that would be helpful to someone receiving services to say, here's a list of, you know, something? Is that what you're maybe saying, is give them the opportunity, show them what's out there, not necessarily help them get the job?
No, just point them to somebody who says, I'm looking for help.
That's a list of open availabilities, right?
And I have, because I can drive down the roads and see the signs, you know, and I will plop onto Indeed and Google searches for them, so.
Sure, sure, I'm just saying, if we just had maybe a running list of what was available, and then they should then go and take it upon themselves to contact those employers.
I don't object to keeping a list. I would object to it not being able to stay current. And I'd be, so, again, I'm only part-time.
No, no, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate what you do. I think what I'm saying is, at a certain point, you provide a list, it's as update as you feel it is, and they need to actually do the work now. It's on them to go.
Oh, we always, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. In the SHARE building, there is a common area with computers and printers, and many times, there's a bulletin board that has postings of current job listings. So I can direct them, and it's right outside my office, and I can direct them right there. Indeed is one of the most used websites, so we do direct them.
Okay, further questions?
Do we have a number of homeless people in our community?
Yes, we do.
Large number, small number?
Not a large number.
How do we provide them services to get them back on their feet?
In encouraging them to seek the help that they need, whether it's mental help or medical help or job search, we just provide them with those resources. We have very good, the welfare department has very good relationships with the agencies between Manchester and Nashua, so we really help. It's on an individual basis. There's also a client advocate that works at SHARE, who I work very closely with in helping that individual or the family. Some of them are just chronic homeless.
Say it again?
Some of them are chronically homeless.
Right.
So they will come in and get food, but they're not usually getting assistance from the town because I have no rent to pay, no utilities to pay.
Right. But you direct them to those agencies that can assist them?
Yeah, yeah.
Further questions? This is a mute point, but we pay rent over there to the tune of $5,600 a year. Now, does SHARE pay taxes to the town, the building property?
I'm not sure, I don't believe so, Peg.
Well, my question is, why are we paying rent? And I know that we're over there because it's easier to have SHARE and, you know, us together for the clients. But I think it's kind of redundant to give them tax-free as well as pay them. I'm just going to say it.
Peg, I can find out for you and get back to you on that on Monday.
I know we used to have it over here at the library and then moved there, and I think it's wise to be there. I'm just wondering about the rent, whether it's...
That's a good question.
Just out of a gracious thought or what?
Marty has her hand up.
Yeah, Marty.
SHARE does not pay taxes?
They are an exempt entity.
Marty, can you start over?
They don't pay taxes?
Yes. SHARE does not pay taxes, they are an exempt entity. They apply every year for exemption.
Thank you, Marty. Further questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, have a great day.
Thank you.
Betsy here?
Please, sir.
Recognize Betsy Salon for the library. And that'll be on page 109.
I usually let the trustees present because it's their budget, but it looks like I got to be the victim today. How do you want to proceed with this? Do you just want us to highlight things that have changed?
Well, if you just want to walk, walk through your budget, you can kind of highlight those things that have changed, make, make note of those that have not stayed the same.
I will point out that the year-to-date expenditures in 2021 for various line items might look a little overextended in some areas and very under-expended in others. And I can, went through in almost every single over, overrun, I'll say. Even though it's a bottom-line budget, it's not really totally overrun. But it was all due to COVID and things that we had to put in place in the first half of the year to get the building open. So, for instance, we, we might have had to spend more on office supplies because we had to spread staff throughout the building, but we didn't spend nearly, nearly anything in staff, professional development, travel and mileage and conference fees. So, so they sort of offset each other. But we kept these lines as they were back in 2019 because we know we're crossing our fingers that we're going to go back and not have to make these COVID expenses this year. So, that being said, we can go down line by line.
Yeah, it looks like things have only changed due to, well, there's a big increase in the part-time and temp for next year. Is that because we're open more than we're happy? That's the only thing. And some of the fees have gone up, which is not uncommon. The G milks and, and the internet service stuff, we have no control over either of those things. So we're hoping we're going to get more people in the G milks so that the, the subscription service goes down again.
Does everybody have anything other than this? Because this is all I have.
I have the one line.
We don't, we don't have any detail. I have no breakdown.
I sent out the detail on Tuesday morning, David, in an email.
Did you send it to us?
Yep, he did.
Yes, I did.
I didn't get one.
Well, I'll point out that we have a 3.5% COLA on the salary line. And then we added $1,000 to, we have, unfortunately, in today's society, we need to update, upgrade our legal fees. So we put in $1,000 that we didn't, we don't normally have in our budget. But other than that, everything is pretty much flat that we, anything that we have can control over.
Yep.
And so our overall increase, I think, was 3.6%.
Yep.
Majority of that being the COLA.
Are there any questions? I guess I would request in the future if that detail could be included with the budget.
It was included, Gary, as an email sent to us with the operating budget.
We have, we have, go ahead.
It was in the same email that was sent to us. I understand what you're saying. It wasn't on the table.
Exactly. And that's the point, is it?
No, understood.
So I'm just asking, in the future, even though it's, it's sent out to us, if it could be included here so that we're just not looking at something that just is one line of transfers. Any questions at this point for the library?
We're still there. We're still open. People are there.
Renovations to the building?
Right. We, we recently were given a gift of a new Skylight.
A gift of a?
New Skylight.
Love it.
And that was installed last month. It's gorgeous. The trustees also spent about $21,000 to do roof repair on areas where the old addition met the oldest building, was leaking, and we had mold issues and water damage. So the roof repair should take care of that. And we also have grant requests. We'll find out in December. Some ARPA funding might be coming our way in order for us to implement a teen, a teen area in the library without having to make that part of our expansion projects. So we're chipping away wherever we can and.
I know HVAC has been an issue in the past.
It still is.
Where are we with HVAC?
There will be a warrant article.
In there and it's 90 degrees and other days you're freezing.
That, that will be the warrant article again this year. It will be the same thing. The only difference is the cost has gone up like everything. Do you have an estimated cost or price on that warrant? We'll still do the $9.95. And the, the remaining part will be, I think it's 1.3. It was 1.2 before, so.
We'll have to do fundraising and matching somehow.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Shannon.
So if anybody has questions about warrant articles, we intend to have it on the Board of Sleutman agenda for the 22nd. So hopefully that'll, it'll obviously go out beforehand. Department heads have had it for a couple of weeks now to look at it. So it will be, so if you have questions about that, I know we're here to talk about the operating budgets. You have questions on warrant articles, it'll be on the 22nd meeting with the BOS. It'll be, that's our intention, is to have it, at least begin that discussion on those. There's only really two that, you, you have the libraries, then you have a fire truck. And after that, it just drops down to, after the budgets and stuff for us, water, sewer, it goes straight into the capital reserves. So there's not really a lot of top-heavy stuff on there, so. But again, that'll, our intention is to have those starting to get discussed on the 22nd.
When do you anticipate finalizing the warrant articles for the year? Because I know last year they weren't finalized until late, which made it difficult for people to submit petition warrant articles if those articles were taken off. When do you anticipate?
I can answer that?
Yes.
Warrant articles will be on every board meeting from the 22nd until the end of the year. I will push for them to have them agreed upon, hopefully by the end of the year. We do have a set date for petition warrant articles, and that's already on. So nothing that came out last year didn't go on the warrants. But, you know, by the time we had, it's just they took an extra amount of time to approve all of them. So we'll, we'll be a little bit reeled in. We had a SNAPU last year with a different board and a different town administrator, but should be all set this year.
Thank you, Tim.
Further questions? And you may, you may have mentioned that other professional services has to do with what?
Is that the legal fees? I'm thinking that might have been the.
It went from $290 to $1,400.
Yep, that's where we put in the $1,000.
Okay.
Yep.
So you don't use the town attorney for legal issues?
We do, we do, but we.
But we have to pay.
Oh, you have to pay separately?
Pay from our budget, yes.
Several departments have legal built in us. So admin, community development has their own line item. The library has one. Water and sewer has one. Well, I use the town council, but I'm not going to pay for water and sewer to use town council. So everybody's got their, their own budget line. They're, for the most part, they're not very big because they don't have to do it a lot. So community developments is by far the largest because they do a lot with planning and zoning and things of that nature, so.
So the legal fee is not centralized. It's dispersed within the individual.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Further questions for the library? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry I was late. Or early, early for me. Glad for you all.
I can see nothing over there because of that light coming down hitting the floor here. And it's completely blocking me.
That one I don't know how to fix for you.
You can put a chair in front of it for it.
Jump up there.
Seriously, John, do you want me to put a chair in front of it? It will block it from his eyes. It's the reflection off the floor though. It is coming down.
Yes, sir.
Take a pee.
My marching orders.
I still can't see. You know what? Let me move over here.
Usually doesn't go that well. Where's the pole? There's a pole at the.
You know what? I can now see you guys because I can't see.
He's one passing along.
What?
How many hours they're operating.
So I have tons of them. You know what I do? I buy them.
Police officers. And really destroy the upholstery.
I buy them at Yacht Seals. They threw them away.
We will recognize Chief Viola and Captain Frye for the police department. And see, I think we're on page 51. And Captain Pelletier, sorry.
I don't know if Chris was ready or not. You ready?
I'm ready.
Excellent. Well, thanks for having us this morning. We're, it seems like it's going pretty quick. I'm hoping I can get out as quick as the library did. That'd be great. So in reference to the police department budget for this year, the proposed budget, overall, our police budget is going to, is proposed as $2,685,896. It's an increase of approximately 4.7%. Our, our department is broken down into three areas. It's administration. It's what's basically comprised of the salaries, supplies and capital outlay. Then we have operations, which basically deals with patrol division functions. And then our support, which is investigations, training, and court members, et cetera, like that. So what I'd like to do is just break down each individual department for everybody. In reference to police administration, our proposed budget in that area is $2,478,330. It's a 4%, 4.6% increase. Basically, in this area, that, that deals most, with most of our salaries. Our purchased services, supplies and materials, and vehicles, which is one of the big drivers for the increase in this area. So our wages is based on whatever town decides and also our union contracts. So we really have not a whole lot to say so on that. If you go down to contractual equipment, which is under purchased services, there was a slight increase, just to $5,000 from $2,000. And that's in reference to the possibility of we have to update our cameras and security at our police department. We've talked with the IT director, and we feel that definitely we're going to have to do some upgrades for this coming year.
Can you hold just for a second?
Yep.
You had mentioned your, your wages were at 2.4, but I'm seeing a 2.3 number on my sheet. Everybody seeing that?
What sheet are you looking at?
Page 51. Total salaries and wages is 2.3, and you had mentioned 2.4. Just wondering if we have, don't have the latest.
No, it's, it should be 2.4. What's the, the date on the top left-hand corner?
11-3.
Basically what that is, is 2.4 is the overview of everything in the administration budget.
Yeah, I just was questioning the number. The number you gave isn't different than the one I see on the sheet.
If you go to page 54, you'll see the 2.4 on that page. In the box. We're at the bottom of.
I see, 2.7. Okay, okay. Good, thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
And then we had some, just very slight increases in areas such as postage, clothing and uniforms. Ballistic vests did have a decline, and that's based on the, when our vest that the officers wear when they expire. They have a five-year life on them, and then we have to provide them a new vest. Then we have the, the major driver of the increase in this area is vehicles. This year, we proposed to have two vehicles in the budget this year and also two computers, which basically came to 112,784 approximately. And again, last year, we budgeted one vehicle. So that's why you'll, you'll see the main increase on that. I figured we'll probably do vehicles later, or do you want to just go into it now? That's, I guess that's usually one of our biggest discussions.
Why don't you go ahead and do it now?
Okay. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll have Captain Frye just give a quick overview of our vehicles and where we stand on that.
So from the, from the sheet that I passed out, it basically breaks down cruises that we have, the cruises that we lost this year. And that is going to be the A16 that was totaled on an accident. The supervisor's car, that one was removed for the A21, basically a trade-in. And then the B14 was removed offline because it blew a motor in it. And that one there, basically, I think I didn't get the ending miles when it was brought down to MHQ, but I know it was like 135, 140,000 miles. So we didn't feel the need to replace that. And replacing that is a specialty car. So basically, because that is, that type of style was a 2014, you couldn't just throw it in a new car. So we would have to buy all-new dog stuff, all-new cage, everything else. So what we did was we took the best used car we had, which was the A17, which was able to be retrofitted for all the canine stuff just to be transferred over. So we basically took, we lost the dog car. We lost the A16. And then we basically lost another primary vehicle for patrol dedicated to the canine unit, which is just a one-person vehicle. So as you can see, we have six cars over 100,000 miles. We have two that are over 90,000 miles. So the miles is getting up there. You know, and this also, you know, includes, we added up the idle miles, which, as you can see, are quite high. And a lot of that has to do with the amount of details that, that we work in town, which basically the cars are sitting there, running with all the lights on and able to get into if you have to, right away, to act on anything that we have to act with the vehicle for. So that's about it in a, you know, and how, how we plan on doing it. The two cars, if we get two cars, we'll get rid of the, one of the Crown Vic cars and the other 16 to help offset any change orders or anything from vote to when actually the car is purchased.
Any questions on cars?
I have a question.
Peg?
Okay. In traveling, I noticed that some, you know, communities don't use cars. They have, like we have at Shepherd Park, a sign with all the lights on, everything telling you what's going on. Is it possible to not have to use a car for this? Or is it a state requirement or, you know, for details?
Most of the private companies want cruises.
They require it?
I don't know if they're required with the company, but that's what they ask for, and that's what they get.
Okay.
Perfectly understand why a vehicle with lights on is there. It's highly visible. That's the idea. Is an officer, detailed officer, with the vehicle at all times?
Yeah, it is with the vehicle at all. Well, he's, or she is around the car, yeah.
Is it possible that instead of having the engine running, that a small inverter generator, like the, like you. Because I believe you said an engine idling for an hour is akin to twenty-five miles or Ford thirty to thirty-five miles recommendation. So that if it's sitting idling, it's wearing out versus if it were having the power, running the lights come from another source, the engine wouldn't have to run? Is that possible?
Yeah, a few years ago, some large departments down south do that. They start messing with the cars. Couple officers got killed because of the carbon monoxide that released into the car and they, ultimately, they tried to go after Ford for it. And then Ford looked and said, who's modifying the car? So your ideas are good. We pay forty-eight thousand dollars just for the car. I don't, I've never thought about putting a generator near a car, but, um, I guess that would add cost to the car.
I would, I would not be in favor of that. I, I think the way it works is good. In reference to what Captain Frye was talking about, I think it was three or four years ago, they had a, um, a recall with Ford in reference to the exhaust coming in. And it was, the main issue was that when, when you're retrofitting your vehicles, if you did change the way it was, there was some cause, cause of factor that was allowing exhaust to go in. And that was, uh, I know it was a lawsuit, but I don't know what ever happened with that.
Mr. Dodger?
What are your thoughts about getting three cars instead of two cars? Do we really need more cars and you're, you're just being cautious and asking for two? Should we get three?
If we can get three, that would be great. Um, I, we also, as we talked, uh, at a recent BOs meeting, uh, in reference to the possibility of leasing program. Again, uh, if we do any of that, that type of program, I think it would benefit the whole, the whole town. Then we would be able to start kinda like a fleet program throughout the town where right now we are, we use our cars to a point where I don't, I wouldn't really feel too comfortable sending them to other departments. So I, I think we're behind the eight ball on this, so I wouldn't be opposed to having three vehicles, um, but, um, whatever the town decides on that, I'd be happy with it. So we, we've always, we usually put two in the budget to begin with. Our, our thought process was if we were to look at the possibility of a lease program, we would try to go seven, um, five patrol vehicles and two admin vehicles. And then it would be a three-year lease that we're looking at. And then it would basically be half the fleet. And then three years from now, it'd be half the fleet. So that's, that's kinda what we were looking for on the fleet program, if that's what we were looking, you know, if the town was looking to do that. But by all means, we need vehicles. We've said it before in the past, we feel it's the officer's office per se. They're in that vehicle ten hours a day, and we would just like them to have the best equipment that they can get.
Chief, how much would a lease be in that situation? Any ideas? Seven cars, three years.
So we haven't got all the numbers in yet because we're trying to figure out, I couldn't remember it last time, I think Paul, I think we managed to put computers in the cars, but right, just for the cars alone, is a hundred and nine thousand dollars a year.
And if we purchase two, it's what, ninety-five, ninety-six?
Pardon me?
If we purchase two a year.
They're about fifty-five thousand dollars a piece.
Yeah, it's about a hundred and twelve thousand.
So they're about equal, right?
You know, last year, or the last time we looked at it, Paul assisted us and he ended up getting a better finance percentage, I believe it was, that, that lowered the price. And this is based on just the raw numbers that we've gotten so far. So it, it could be reduced a little bit, it might be a little more, I'm not sure yet. But we're just, just really looking into it now and just getting the information back.
And it's, it's all Ford, it's all Ford leasing, and the rate for them right now for municipalities and the federal government is four point five percent.
Mr. Freel?
So in your, in your budget, you already have two vehicles?
Yes.
So if you switched it to a lease, would that be in the budget also and be about equal?
No, what we would have to do with the lease...
We would, um, and we had talked about the other, the other day, we would like to keep the two vehicles in, in the budget. If we did a lease program, we'd like to do a warrant article for that with the stipulation in the warrant article that if the warrant article is passed, then that would be taken out of the budget, the, the two vehicles.
Basically cover the first year, approximately the first year of, with that savings out of the budget.
Okay.
Mr. Freel?
Has a department, thank you. Has a department ever thought, and I don't know if there's any programs offered by the government to offer any kind of incentives, switching over to electric vehicles? Or is that something that's just a no-no as far as cruises? And if it is, what about other vehicles just for, let's say, chief driving around or the captains driving around, maybe not a pursuit vehicle, but is it something, is that even an option? I would think the government's pushing for green energy kinda stuff.
There is options out there. I'm, I'm not quite sure what the prices are on the electrical vehicles. But take our admin vehicles, they're, they don't have the police package in them, some of them don't. So they are, they are cheaper than what the, um, what we use for the, the vehicles on the road. So we, we do look into that part of it. We don't have, uh, as, as many extras on the admin vehicles that we would on the regular patrol vehicles.
But you don't know of any, like, incentives that the, that, you know, oh, go, go electric and save twenty grand on the vehicle, ten grand. There's nothing out there that you don't have?
Um, right now, Ford's having a hard time getting regular cars, so I, I don't know about that.
It's hard to get cars.
There hasn't been any flyers or anything out, you know, to say, to say that, to, you know, everyone should switch to electrical and...
Yeah, so you're stuck with Ford. We wouldn't go outside of that.
We've, we've looked at other ones also. We've looked at the, um, the Dodge, um, and we've looked at, the, the other issue we're running into is, um, just the, they're changing the, the vehicles. I mean, Ford went from the Crown Vics and the Torres's, and now they're only doing the SUVs. It's, that's been our biggest problem of getting newer vehicles because everybody's either switching to the SUVs or, and they're getting rid of the smaller vehicles and so on. And it's just, there's not a big choice anymore. You used to have Chevy, Chevrolet, Ford, Dodge. We're not seeing as much as we used to.
And our, our SUVs, you weren't on the board, but a few years ago, when we, the big switch was to go to the SUVs, I did a little video about our six-foot-seven guys who have a hard time getting in and out of a car.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and then you put all this gear on and it gets a little bit even harder to quickly get out of a car. So the SUVs work for us. Um, you know, so that's why we went and switched all the fleet over to SUVs. And any admin was admin cars, not SUVs.
Mr. Labonte?
On the cruises and the budget, have we actually put these out to bid? And if we have, how many companies bid on them? And what was the range that they came back in?
Uh, no, we don't take them out to bid. We've been dealing with MHQ because of the way that their purchase power is. They deal with three very large competitive bidding processes down in Massachusetts. We are on the Plymouth County, um, bid, um, which entails Boston PD, um, part of Mass State Police. So we buy at their volume price. We have tried to go back to New Hampshire, and what happens with New Hampshire is they start nickel and diming you. They don't, you can get the car, here's the car, and then everything else is an extra. So basically Ford and MHQ, with the power that MHQ has because they have five outlets throughout the whole country, they buy freight cars, um, so they get the discount prices off of, from Ford. So we basically have over the years saved about eight, nine thousand dollars away from staying in New Hampshire and trying to get competitive bid prices.
What, what you're saying makes perfect sense. Does that meet our purchase policy, though? Like I said, I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest. I, I guess, does that follow our policy of not putting stuff?
If I understood, Craig, if I understood you right, so you say we go through somebody that does do competitive bidding?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, I would say that does.
That's all I wanted to make sure is that we were covering our tail.
I think you said three too, didn't you? They go out and they, basically we contract with MHQ to, and they do the bidding process for us, correct?
Correct.
Accurate?
Yeah, and they deal with Ford.
I would say that, that, that does then, yes. Just checking.
For, for as long as I can remember, the threshold has been a hundred thousand miles. And yet today, they're making engines better and more efficient than, than in the past. Why have we not moved the threshold up from a hundred thousand to, to go along with the, the way that they make engines today?
Yep, you're, you're exactly right. The engine is, they are better, lighter. The issue comes down with everything else that's underneath that motor. They're, they're driven twenty-four-seven in all kinds of weather. We ask the guys to go wherever they can with the cruises. It's the underneath that basically you have to question. We don't know until something breaks as far as underneath something. And what we don't wanna do is have those parts that are not so much iron and steel anymore, there are a lot of them are aluminum. So they, when they snap, they snap. There's no give or take. So there comes, there comes a point where you have to actually start worrying about what's underneath the car than the motor. So that's, that's how we look at, you know, the big driver obviously is the motor, the, the idle hours. But when you start looking at the age of cars and you start hearing stuff that's underneath the car, you gotta kinda wonder how safe the car really is. And they can break even after an inspection. We all know that the car can just break an axle or what have you. A lot of times we, we, people's wheels fall off cars. We handle a lot of accidents where the wheel just rolls down the street in front of them. And they, you know, that, that's just the unknown that we have. And when you're, you know, when you're an emergency vehicle, it's not just going twenty miles an hour. We stop, we accelerate, we do a lot of hard miles, or that's what it's called in the police world, hard miles on a cruiser. It's not just normal driving as we would expect other people to do with their personal cars. So it's, it's more or less, we, we like to use the hundred thousand mile motor. We, we do get more money when you get rid of these cars earlier in life. They're worth more. So that's, that's how we look at it. That's how Ford looks at it, that's how MHQ looks at it, and we bring them down there.
Okay, thank you. And of, of the vehicles that we have, what percentage of them are used for details in town and out of town?
Anyone that's back there.
Pretty much all the marked vehicles.
I'm sorry?
Pretty much all the marked patrol vehicles are used. If they're on the back lot and, and they're not being used for patrol, then we have a detail, they'll go out.
Okay.
We've even used the crime scene van on some too.
It gets, the cruiser gets fifteen dollars an hour. So this year, tentatively, we have a round number.
Right, right around between thirty-five, thirty-six thousand so far that we've, we have right now. We, we don't have the, the exact numbers. We're having some, uh, computer issues we're dealing with in reference to our IMC system that we have within the department, so we couldn't get the exact numbers on that.
Okay, if you could pull your microphone a little closer, Chief, I can probably hear you better. I, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, and I understand we make money when, when we use them for details, but I don't wanna go spending fifty-five thousand for, for, you know, cars just to use them for details to get, to get more. I mean, it just doesn't, if we're gonna use them for patrolling and things like that, and I know they get swapped around, but that's why I was asking for the percentage of time that we're, that our cars are sitting at a detail versus out there patrolling the roads.
Our, our main thing is we, we have our primary vehicles that we use mainly, mainly for patrol. That's our newer vehicles for the, for the officers. A lot of times the, the vehicles that we use first on the details are gonna be our older vehicles. Again, we, we end up using some more, um, the, the newer ones as we go through, but we, we use the new, the new vehicles that we have. Our first priority is patrol, and that's, that's how we use it, and then we go from there on that. So again, the, the, the main reason that we're using these vehicles on, on the details is just for safety of the workers that, that are working that. That's, that's, that's the goal. It's not in reference to the revenues we're getting or anything else. It's, yeah, it's mainly the, these companies that are coming into our town want their services, so we're, we're trying to give them the service as much as we can. And as you've seen, we, we're, we're, we're not as strict as a lot of towns. There is a lot of details going on and you won't see a patrol vehicle there. So we try to make sure that we're using them mainly on the, on the main roads that are within the town with the high traffic volume. So we, we try to work with the, with the companies coming in also.
Thank you.
And a lot of towns, a lot of towns actually use the revenue from their cruises to offset purchases for police cars, police equipment. And that, that's something that gets talked about every year, well, not every year, but for the last few years have been talked about, why don't, why doesn't the town in Milford take the revenue that's generated off a cruiser and help offset the cruises? But that's something that the board has to figure out and, and how that's done.
Because currently, that revenue goes to general fund and it's, can be spent at the discretion of whatever.
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not spent, it just goes to offset the tax rate.
Goes off to set the tax rate, but it doesn't go directly back to the particular department like the police department, as Captain is talking about, other towns have decided to do. It's, it's an interesting thing to study, I would imagine, and to look at and see if that is a way to offset some of the taxes by using some of that revenue. It would be an interesting study.
Mr. Dodger?
Could you repeat again, which two cars are gonna be replaced by the, the two that are in the budget? And then, um, secondly, if you had a third vehicle, what would be the next car to be replaced?
Um, we would basically get rid of the sixteen, which is gonna be the B sixteen. And then the...
A fifteen? A fifteen?
B. B sixteen. One twenty-nine thousand. And then we would get rid of the two thousand nine Crown Vic, the one that's on the second page.
And if you got a third vehicle, what would be next in line?
Um, we would probably, it's, it's a little bit of a car shuffle. We talked about this. We would probably either get rid of the other Crown Vic, the B eleven Crown Vic, and take one of the primary units or one of the better units and get rid of the graphics and transition that into an admin car. But it's, that when you get, start talking about the third car, it becomes a little bit of a shuffle of what we would do if we ever had that opportunity.
Mr. Labonte?
Captain Frye, you mentioned replacing one of the cars on the Crown Vic, which is not a marked vehicle now, but you already have your A sixteen, um, your Supervisor fifteen, and your B fourteen that have all been taken out. I, I guess, why, why wouldn't you be putting back a marked frontline vehicle with the two cruises? I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, looking at your list you have, you have your A sixteen, which was removed in twenty twenty-one, so that, that is not in your service fleet right now, correct?
Right.
Okay, then your, your Supervisor unit fifteen is removed, so that's not in service. That's a canine one or whatnot now. But what I'm saying is you have that vacant spot now. Am I understanding that wrong? You're missing that vehicle, the one you transferred over to the canine...
Yes.
Is now being used for canine, so you don't have that Supervisor's vehicle.
So... Well, the Supervisor was moved, um, when the purchase, the twenty-one came in.
Okay, I guess I was, just wasn't sure there on the twenty-one because the twenty-one's not listed as a Supervisor's vehicle. So I, I understand what you're saying now on that one. But, but I guess I'm still confused on your second one, though, why you'd be replacing that back to the Crown Vic versus when you still have another open marked service vehicle?
Oh, 'cause we don't, we, we don't, we don't wanna grow the fleet too much, um, you know, so that's, that's why we're, that's why we're removing the cars that we...
I guess I don't understand how you're growing the fleet, 'cause you're, according to this, you have three that are no longer in service on that front page. versus when you still have another open marked service vehicle.
Oh, because we don't, we don't want to grow the fleet too much. You know, so that's why we're removing the cars that we're gonna remove.
I guess I don't understand how you're growing the fleet, because according to this, you have three that are no longer in service on that front page, marked vehicles.
Right, so it's really just the replacement of the S-15, so that one was replaced with the A-21. The Supervisor's car, they basically used one of the 18s and it's designated the B-18, but they jump into the other 18 as well. So, yeah, so, I mean, we lost, we didn't, I say we lose a car, but it's, when you jockey the K-9 car into another K-9 car, it's basically just taking a cruiser offline for us to use. So really, there is only two cars that we're down low on. But, you know, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I'll keep all the cars you want me to keep.
And I'm not trying to criticize your choice, I'm just trying to understand that when I look at this list, I'm seeing that you're missing three marked cruisers. So if you get two new ones, you're gonna replace one marked one and then replace one to a detective. So to me, I guess my initial thought means you're not replacing all of your marked.
If we, if we get two new cars, then I would just get rid of the, the first intuition that I had is just to get rid of the 16, because that one is basically scary to drive.
Okay.
No, the B-16, sorry, the A-16's already gone.
I think I understand somewhere you're going to, but I guess I still don't understand, but we'll figure it out in the long run.
I mean, it's a work in progress on that, and if we feel, I mean, we constantly look at the fleet that we have, and I got, one of the Crown Vics basically is not being used anymore. It won't pass inspection, it won't run. So we would have to, you know, if we got three vehicles, we would definitely reevaluate everything that we have, and then again, come up with a plan to address that issue. If we feel, we would, that third vehicle will be used, whatever is the best for the department. If we feel it's best to use for a marked, you know, or best to have one of our older vehicles stripped down, we would do it. Again, with the approval with the town administrator and so on, on how we go about it. Or we would just, you know, add another vehicle right to the fleet. We, the biggest problem, the other issue we have is right now, in reference to our unmarked or admin cars, is I got one that we have to jumpstart on a pretty frequent basis sometimes. I got another one that pretty much is just sitting there, so, and I have another detective car with a lot of miles on it too. So we basically, we use all our cars for everybody. We're not, you know, if somebody says, hey, can I use the car you use? I'm like, go ahead and use it. I mean, it's a team effort, but we're just trying to get to the point where we're comfortable with the fleet that we have, and it's an evolving door on that.
Thanks.
I have two things. Number one, I remember when we asked you to do the experiment about rebuilding.
Yep.
And how did that go?
Well, the fleet, the car is still here. That's the A-15.
I mean, is it something you'd ever consider again, or, I mean, did it work out well enough?
I was against it from the beginning. I still don't, it does work. When we first did it, we used it as our SRO vehicle, school resource vehicle. After conversations with the Board of Selectmen and all, the decision was made to use it, you know, throughout the shifts, and we do. So it's basically a pool vehicle. It's working. But again, it's, it's, you know, we redid the inside of it to try to help out, to make sure, you know, it wasn't breaking down besides the engine. But it's still being used, but it's not, it's not something that is recommended within our industry. We've talked to everybody from the local company that does the maintenance on our vehicles to companies that we bought our vehicles, and they've all pretty much said, that's really not the way to go about it. And that's, you know, the local company, they would stand, I would believe they would stand to make money in reference to that with the repairs that they would have. And they basically said, that's really not the best option, you know, for the police department or the town to go in.
So basically, it was nice except not for emergency vehicles.
What's that?
So it was, it worked, but not for emergency vehicles.
It's just not the recommended practice. Is it working for us right now? Yes, it is. It did, you know, we still use it. And as you see, we built it at 96, and we're still, we're at 134 now.
Right. Yep. Okay, I just wondered, it was a nice experiment. The other question is if we end up with encumbered funds at the end of the year, is one of the potential purposes or possible use would be for a cruiser?
Well, I'm sorry.
Well, we've discussed that as well, because we have a totaled car, which was unexpected, obviously. So we have received money from Primex for it, so we gotta have that discussion with the town administrator and the BOS of how to replace that car first, and then worry about the other two cars in March.
Okay, great. Thank you, Guy. Other questions?
Yes, please.
Just one more.
I guess my first question slash concern is, I remember when the discussion came up about rebuilding the cars. I was also not in support of it. I backed off a little and became somewhat in support of it under the premise that it would never be a primary unit. And I see it listed as a primary unit. So that's concerning to me, the rebuild.
Yes. It is, we use it as a primary, the SRO use it, and then it's usually used on, most of the time, our midnight officer would use it.
I just, I just can't understand why we would have a rebuild as a primary unit. Just food for thought there. And then regarding last year, I thought that you had originally asked for two cruisers last year's budget, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And there's only one that was purchased?
Yes.
What happened?
I can answer that. One of the selectmen asked us to cut another $150,000 out of the budget after we presented it to them. So we were already, had already cut down from there, and so we, we lost one of the cruisers. We lost an ambulance response vehicle and little bits here and there across all the other departments to meet that request.
Sure, and I can appreciate cutting some of the budget for whatever reason. I'm disappointed that that's where it was, because here we again find ourselves in the same situation that we did several years ago, where we're getting behind on cars, and then we have an unfortunate car that gets totaled unexpectedly. Now we're really behind.
No, I understand that. Our, the budget we submitted, that was the staff's recommendation on the final budget. And again, we were asked by the board to cut another $150,000. At that point, we had already cut pretty much, you know, we were pretty lean at that point anyway.
Sure.
So to come up with that number, that was the only way for us to accomplish that. You know, it didn't have to be, except that was just the recommendation we came up with to meet that request.
And was the request to cut those funds purely to reduce the tax impact?
I don't know the reasoning behind it other than just to lower the budget. I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look.
What was, what was the tax impact?
On $150,000? For $150,000? It's negligible, I would imagine. I don't know, I don't have a number, but...
Right.
10 cents.
10 cents on the tax rate on $15 million.
How much was the call?
About 10 cents on the tax rate.
It's negligible, so.
Thank you.
Compared to what we, if we would have kept it, you know.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labonte?
I guess two parts, just to comment to Town Administrator Shannon. I was the original board member that actually asked what the budget would look like, $150,000 less. What was presented to the board was $160,000 at the choice of town administration. It was not chosen by the Board of Selectmen on what to cut. I guess I wanted to just put that clarification out there. My second clarification, just for Captain Fry, just doing simple math, I guess, on what I came back with on your open cruisers. I guess what I was getting to just as a point is not disagreeing on your amount of cruisers you need. I guess on your empty cruisers, in truth from your list, which you guys have either repurposed or lost due to accident, you in theory, according to this list, would have to replace the A-16 in the A-17 cruisers, meaning in theory, you don't have one of those now. So that was where I was going on why you wouldn't replace those two before going down to the Crown Vic.
Okay.
Simply, I'm not trying to tell you where to put your cruisers. I guess just ultimately, every one I get, the 21 replaced one. So if you bring that down, cancel it out and whatnot, those are the two, what I'm gonna say are open positions for you now. That was what I was referring to, I guess.
Right, yeah, I understood that.
Mr. Dodger?
Just for clarification, how many vehicles do you want in your fleet for primary units? How many do you want to have that are good working shape?
At any given moment, we have seven patrol people on shift, so at least seven.
I don't think that really answers the question.
You know, to cover shift related, so your four to two shift and your midnight shift intersect at nine o'clock. So you're gonna have an increased amount of officers on the road, no different than the day shift and, you know, with other staff going in and out. So we definitely need at least seven vehicles just for patrol, a regular patrol related. That's not when we have pumpkin fest or something like that, you know, there's, so we would need a minimum of seven.
But from a practical perspective, you want to have more than that.
Oh, yeah.
You need to have spares for whatever.
I just, I just wanted to, I wanted everybody to know that this, at the, you know, we could have at least, there's gonna be at least seven people on. That's, a lot of people don't understand how many officers that we might have on the road at one time, just answering calls and so on. So I wanted to put that out there, but...
And that's at night. You know, during the daytime, you know, four or five primary units are out.
I think the question was, how many, how many do you desire in your fleet? I believe I count 18 now.
Well, I was breaking it out for primary.
That's everything, yeah.
Not just the entire fleet, but just the mainstream primary units. I'm thinking more like 10 instead of seven.
Okay.
Is that, do you agree with that, or?
You have 11 now, correct?
Well, we have 11 now.
We have 11 now, but they don't.
I wouldn't want to go down from that.
Right, but you're asking which one's so seven, because if you look at the officers out on patrol, you know, and then the other ones get, the other ones get used. I mean, at night, if there's, you know, if there, again, if there's night details, we've come in at night, and there's, the only vehicle there is the crime scene van, because we have night details as well.
We're looking at 11 to 12 marked vehicles we would like to have, minimum.
And then for non-marked vehicles, you have specialty units, but in total, how many of those do you want?
We would at least like to have, for admin cars, five.
Correct?
Four. We'd like to have at least, well, great part would be five, a minimum of four. We have the three captains, you have the detective vehicle, we also have a prosecutor that uses the vehicle. So there's five right there. And again, we do share, but, you know, it's tough when you have a prosecutor that's using her own vehicle on some of the occasions now because we don't have a vehicle that she could use. So then, you know, then you throw in the millets, you know, then we have people using millets and so on. So we try to get it to where they only use the vehicles that we have on the back lot. So we would like, if we can get five, that'd be great.
And we do share the vehicles throughout, and a lot of it too is the juvenile officer. He goes to Nashville, goes to Manchester, and necessarily not in uniform. He's doing court stuff, investigations, so he likes to take an unmarked vehicle.
Mr. Labonte?
How much is an admin vehicle versus a regular patrol marked vehicle? I assume you're not gonna have the same Explorer, as you stated before, I assume you can go with a more, what am I gonna say, scaled down?
It's about $12,000 less.
And is that an SUV or is that a car?
That's a regular car. Usually do the cars on the admin vehicles.
Mr. Dodger?
So in total, say you have 11 primary, five admin, is that 16? Not including like the motorcycle and...
And the crime scene van too.
Crime scene. And the typical unit will last how many years? Five years, six years?
Here? I don't know.
Well, we've got a 2008 Fusion.
I mean, you know, a typical marked unit, is that what you're asking, or a typical just, I mean, the vehicles on the road? I mean, what do we put in per year?
We put, we put about, it's about 20,000 to 30,000 miles a year on a car.
So you're talking, what, five years, four years?
Okay, so if we use five years, and kind of round it off to the 16 units, that should be three vehicles a year on average that we should be doing to flip the unit and keep the fleet up to standards. We haven't done three vehicles a year forever maybe. Maybe once or twice we've done that.
Yeah, not forever. We've done it before. We'd have to bring back the old leadership, but that's a long goal.
Personally, I'm in favor of bumping it up to, instead of trying to do two vehicles a year, try to do three vehicles a year for a while to try to get the fleet back up to standards.
Well, and that's what's interesting about the lease. The financial burden is just about the same as getting two cars. Now granted, we wouldn't ask for any cars for three years. But you also have five fully marked cruisers. We would get rid of cars, obviously, get rid of the older cars. But, you know, it's an interesting concept of what to do. It would help out, like the chief said, if you did this for, say you did it just for two cycles, in that second cycle, you could actually probably give other departments vehicles that have relatively low miles. And then that would help out the concept of the other departments to look at us to see what we have. And then we tell them, and then we show them, and it really, I mean, you see a lot of it. You see, you used to see it a lot more where other departments and other towns and stuff, you'd see that, oh yeah, there's a Crown Vic. And now it has, you know, the building inspector's name on it or something. But you don't really see that quite as often as you used to. And I think a lot of that too is just what Gary was bringing up. We are keeping these cars longer, because the motors, relatively speaking, the motors used to be the first thing that went in the Crown Vic, was the motor. But that was after, you know, several, you know, probably 150,000 miles or so. But the transition of, if you, if you ask other towns if they do transition to give it to the fire department, give it to, you know, DPW or what have you, they try to keep it under that 100,000 mile mark. So the lease vehicle, sure, there's a lot, once you get, it's basically moving cars around to your needs, to what our needs are, and then seeing what we could give up to, you know, and it would only be a three-year, three-year-old car.
I'm not opposed to the three vehicles either, just so you know.
In the lease scenario, if I understand it correctly, it's three years, but then you, it's like a lease purchase, right?
Yeah, you buy them for a dollar.
And then, like, you keep it online for three more years, because you have two groups of, you basically take every car and put it into one three-year term, and then the other ones are in a second three-year term?
Right.
Okay, so...
But, but, no, but these, the seven would be paid for after the three years is up, the seven would be paid for, well, we'd owe them seven bucks. We'd buy it, all seven of them for $7. It's a dollar.
But they're basically in use for six years.
No.
Okay, I'm not understanding.
No, you would get another five, or however more we decided to get at the end of three years.
We do the three years, then we do a second three-year lease for the next, a lot of departments, what they do, they'll do half their fleet, and then they do the next half of the fleet the following cycle. So do a three-year cycle, and then another three-year cycle with the second part of the fleet.
I think what they might be saying, Paul, is they lease the car for three years. If they wanted to, they're gonna own it after. If they wanted to keep it in the fleet for another three years after, they already own it for that. So then the other three cars that they want to replace, they would do another three-year lease for those three cars. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So they'd all be used for six years. It's part of the first-year lease, and then the second half of your fleet is done on another lease, and so the first part are still used for three years. You don't, you don't get rid of them at the end of the three years.
Right.
So in essence, it's a six-year life... So in essence, it's a six-year lifespan on the car. We, we were talking five years a few minutes ago.
Well, we've, I mean, we've got, you know, two thousand fifteen cars still on, out there.
I think, I, I think I'm getting what you're saying. Um, I, I, again, that's how it would work. I, yeah, I, I believe it's at the, we would switch over to the next, whatever we decide on the second part of lease, yes, it would be, I guess, the one good thing about it is everybody would know every year, really what, if we said, this is a hundred thousand every year, it, we wouldn't be having these discussions probably. To, to this point, we would just say, this is what we're doing. We're doing a lease program if the voters approve it. Uh, that's the other issue that we run into, that, that would have to be approved by the voters, I believe.
Mr. Labonte, here's a question.
So can you break it down, what does one vehicle cost to lease for three years? What will it cost the taxpayers for one vehicle for three years?
I'd have to get back to you on that.
I, I guess what I'd be curious to see is my assumption, if we're, if we're going to lease a car for three years, we're going to pay interest on it. So now, I can't, I guess, I, I am trying to understand how a three-year lease is going to be cheaper than paying cash for one vehicle with no finance charge on it. I, I, I assume if we're going with Ford, Ford is going to, if Ford's cost on that cruiser is fifty grand, they're going to recoup fifty grand over a three-year lease for a one-time purchase. It's fifty grand, it's the cost. I guess that, that's why I'm, I'm curious why a three-year lease, I understand on the budgeting of money that you're trying to spread the money out over three years for a constant cost so that everybody understands. And I respect that and understand that. I'm just trying to see the actual difference of when you're paying cash out of pocket, how much cheaper you, I, I, you, you still have to go down through your voters approving the budget and whatnot to know. Uh, either way, we still have to go through the budget process, no matter what. But, but I guess my question is, is what it costs to buy a cruiser outright or to lease a cruiser for three years, what the payment on that, the total cost with interest on that leased cruiser is?
Yeah, I mean, three years is, like I said, the three years, the rough number is four point five and then four and five is four point four percent, so.
Okay.
We can get those numbers.
Yeah, thank, thank you. And, uh, I have been informed that, that lunch is ready, but I would like to get through the rest of the lease.
Yep, that'd be great.
If we could continue, please.
Okay. Um, so I guess we'll, we'll go right into, um, police operations. The proposed budget for this area is a hundred and eighteen thousand fifty. It's an increase of two point six percent. Um, it's only a diff, it's basically a difference of three thousand dollars. And this is, couple of driving forces of that. Again, it's, uh, services to our vehicles. Uh, right now, we're right around twenty-nine thousand. Uh, this is for the maintenance on the vehicles. Uh, we wanted to push that up to thirty thousand for the maintenance cost, because the run rates on this, um, in twenty-twenty, we spent thirty-seven thousand and twenty-nineteen, we spent right at thirty thousand. So that's why we're tr, we're just increasing that budget line item a little bit. And again, um, not sure where gasoline is going on that, but that's, we're, right now, we're on a, um, on, on the state bid in reference to gasoline. That's just based on miles. So, um, our finance director usually works that. We just give them the miles and, and we go from there. And then in police support in that area there, it's, um, the proposed budget's eighty-nine thousand five sixteen. Um, it's a increase of twelve point six percent, it's total of ten thousand dollars. And, um, that is, basically, the driving force on that is on two different items. One is, uh, Power DMS, that's a software program that we use. It's a management software that helps us with our training and overall efficiency of the department, which Captain Pelletier can explain a little more. And also, it's, uh, the implementation of Police One, which is another online training software package that we do. And this is, uh, we, we decided to go with this for a couple of reasons. One was, uh, when the pandemic came, uh, we had to look at different ways to do training, because they were getting rid of a lot of, um, in, in-person training. So one of the programs that we, that Captain Pelletier looked into was the Police One to get our, because we still had to do our mandatory trainings for our officers to keep their certifications. And then, um, so that, that has a, um, an increase. And then the, uh, Power DMS, which is, um, it's usually around fifty-five hundred dollars a year on that. So that's why, in reference to police support dues and memberships, you saw an increase from twenty-seven hundred to eighty-two hundred. Uh, so that's the two driving forces. But I'll have Captain Pelletier explain just real quickly in reference to, um, the different things that we've had to put into place due to the LEAC Commission and the other issues that, that law enforcement are dealing with right now.
Yes, over the course of, um, a year or two, as far as the LEAC Commission goes and police standards and training, we have to increase our annual training from outsiders, what we have to do standard-wise, which is defensive, defensive tactics, handcuffing, firearms, all that stuff. Uh, we're now mandated by the state to do more de-escalation, implicit bias, uh, training like that. So, um, Police One has helped us in that as well. We were able to do some training on that online, uh, because they are doing less in-person training. It is starting to come back around. Um, but we also were able to get those trainings done through PSTC, which was also online. Um, so there will be an increase over the years of mandatory training. Each officer has to do in the state from eight hours to twenty-four, um, which will be starting within a year or two, so.
Any questions on that?
Questions on operations or support, Mr. Dodgy?
What are your current thoughts on body cameras?
We, the body cameras, we did, uh, I did look into that and got quotes, uh, reference to, um, BodyWorn cameras. Uh, the quote we had was right around two hundred thousand. Uh, is, is, they have a five-year program. It'd be about forty thousand a year. On that, that, that is a program that most of the departments in the state are going to. Um, but I also prioritized it and I feel that, um, we have some other issues that I feel that we need to address first before we do that, um, in reference to, which we'll talk later, I'm sure, communication issues and stuff like that. So that's, that's kind of where I put that at. Uh, it's something I think we should look at down the road, uh, when, when the timing is right on that. We do, I, like I said, I have talked to the person, um, the rep from BodyWorn on that. We've also looked at Axon, which is run by TASER. We feel that BodyWorn is the best one to go with if we, in the future, if we do go with that. Um, and then, you know, we don't have a, a, a lot of complaints. Um, so that's why I really prioritize it as this is, we feel like we need to get the communications part done before we really put a other major, uh, cost expenditures out there, um, just for right now.
Other questions?
Yeah. Are you able to take advantage of the insurance proceeds from the total vehicle? Is, is that in your budget? You get those funds?
Well, we go, goes to the, goes to the general fund, but.
Yeah, so basically, the, the check goes back into the general fund and the chief will be presenting to the board to make up the difference between what a new vehicle costs and what we receive from the insurance. Uh, much the same happened with, uh, the vehicle we lost in the fire department last year. Uh, we received a certain amount based on the depreciated value.
Yep.
And then it's up to the board to allow us to take out of identified surpluses from this year's budget.
Got it.
Other questions? Mr. Labonte?
Now, I have a question that's not just specific to your budget, but I guess it's overall still for administration. So, you know, you guys go through in your budget and you identify different line items where you want to see more, i- as far as anticipated costs being up. How, how do we land as far as burn rate in a budget? I, I know each department tends to spend money because it's a bottom-line budget. You know, you can take money out of your budget and put it somewhere else. It, you know, using your budget specifically, you know, I, I know that there's been a substantial amount of money that's come out of your budget in the last two years, um, whether it be for like the architect in engineering on the proposed warrant article three last year. Um, that, that was twenty-something thousand dollars, I think. Um, same thing this year, that there's been, um, money that's been allocated and used towards Crown Castle. A- at some point, for all that excess money that keeps popping up, do we ever, I'm going to call it realign line items to bring them back down to the actual burn rate on what we spent?
So typically, we, we do not. Um, we have had, because of the pandemic, um, the town administrator, um, halted a lot of spending items because we didn't know what was going to go on last year. So that, that generated surplus. Uh, this year specifically with the police department, they've been down one patrolman the entire year and two patrolmen for another extended period of time. And now they're down a sergeant, I believe. So these surpluses, uh, come up, um, not expectedly.
Mm-hmm.
And we have no way of identifying each year on what given department's budget, we're going to see a large increase of surplus. Um, if, if we carry a fifty-degree average temperature from now until March, there's going to be some, some extra money in utilities. Uh, we just never know year to year.
No, and that's fine. I guess it wasn't so much directed towards your department. It's, it's as the town budget as a whole. I, I guess my question comes down to, once again, understanding that it's a bottom-line budget and we can spend where we want. But at what point, when, i- in your scenario, we are down officers for the year, why doesn't that money just go back to the taxpayers?
Because they've already voted to allow the town to spend that money.
Spend the money on the personnel or the use that it was there, seeing as it didn't get spent on that.
As you said, sir, it's a bottom-line budget, so it necessarily, we're not locked in to have to spend that money on personnel. If another need presents itself, then we're able to do that, depending on what the amount of the cost is or whether or not.
Okay, like I said, I, I.
That would be my response.
Uh, s- some of it, I guess, like I said, I, I, I don't think, in my own personal opinion, there's not a problem of coming back to say, you know what, guys, you know, whatever department you're in, we came in under budget. That's, I, I guess that, that's my.
That's all done at the end of the year and it's called the surplus. And then the board decides whether to encum, encumber a vehicle like they, we would really like them to last year, but that didn't happen. So that's the surplus, that's the money you're talking about. And then that's the money the board then votes to in turn to give back to the people.
That's part of.
At that point in time.
That's part of the money.
So that does happen.
That's part of the money that comes back, because during the rest of the year, in a bottom-line budget, any department can spend, allocate that money in their budget how they want.
Something they need to spend on, yes. They don't just go willy-nilly and just go, hey, hey, you know what, we need a soda machine and go buy one. So they, they use it on stuff that is actual, there is a need to buy at that point in time.
I, I think some of that can be debatable, and I'm not looking to debate that here today.
Well.
Thank you, sir. Though I, that answered my question.
Mr. Dodgy?
I forgot the name of it, but there's a program for doing, uh, overall quality assessment of the police departments. It's like a certification, um.
The CLIA? It's the CLIA accreditation?
Yes, thank you. Uh, what are your current thoughts on that? I assume it's the same sort of thing as the, uh, body armor and that, you know, it's something that's desirable in the future, but can you spend like thirty seconds on that?
Yeah, again, it's a, it's a accreditation process. Uh, it's, I, I have no problem with it. Uh, also, the state is looking into the possibility of maybe, uh, doing a state accreditation, uh, program too, which I believe they used to have years ago. So CLIA is the national one and then the state is the, also looking in the possibility of doing a state one. So for smaller departments, the state one might be the better option because it's, uh, it's not as expensive. There, there is a, a cost to CLIA and it's, it's based on the amount of officers that you have, the amount of personnel. And also, it's, um, you almost have to bring another person in to assist with it. It, it's very time-consuming. It's, it's about showing proofs and how, how you operate your department. It's a good program. Um, like I said, a lot more departments are going to it now or looking into it. And we have looked into it in the past and, again, it, it's something that I wouldn't have a problem going to. Uh, but it's a, it, it's about a two-year process to take. You, you have to do a lot of changes. It's, it's all in reference to policies and how, how you operate your department. It's a, probably a two-year process overall.
Other questions?
Derek?
Yes?
So to answer Chris, Chris, it's about five thousand dollars a year in interest for the, for the seven cars.
Five thousand a year?
Five thousand for seven cars?
Yeah, for seven.
Okay.
Approximately.
No, no, that's why.
That's at four point, and you know, when we did this a couple of years ago, Paul sits down there and he does his magic with finding someone other than Ford. So these are all just rough numbers. We knew that the question came up again this year, came up with the budget committee again this year. So this is really, I got this email two days ago, so it, it hasn't been finalized or anything, um, but I just thought that's sort of the rough idea of what you wanted. So there is interest.
The biggest reason why I want to know is because when we have capital behind us that we can buy them outright, I guess I look at it, one way to save money is why would you pay interest if you don't have to?
Well, and we had that money last year or the year before and it got voted down that we shouldn't buy all the cars at once, so.
Any further questions? Seeing none, the time being eleven fifty, which is right on time for lunch. So we will recess for thirty minutes.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, if, uh, we'll have the meeting reconvene, please. And we'll recognize the ambulance director, Eric Schelberg.
Good afternoon, folks. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate the opportunity to present the ambulance service budget.
Page sixty-three.
Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. Again, good, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to present the ambulance service budget for twenty-two.
Eric, I'm going to ask you to speak up, please.
I'll get right up close.
All right, is that better?
It turned on?
Okay. One more time, thank you for the opportunity to present the ambulance service twenty-two budget. Um, you will, I, just a couple of comments that I'd like to just make is that the ambulance service operates with, um, two ambulances. One ambulance is twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week with a paramedic. And the second ambulance is sixteen hours a day, uh, seven days a week as well. We respond to just over two thousand calls a year. Uh, it looks like on our run rate for this year, we're going to be responding to about two thousand fifty-plus calls. And we're going to bring in approximately eight hundred-plus thousand dollars worth of revenue towards, uh, that will go to the general fund. Um, so with the big highlights for this year's budget, I'll just go through the, we'll start with the wages. And I'd just like to note that the individual line items within the budget, um, you'll notice that there are some big swings, but it's the total salaries and wages line item of a five-point-one percent increase. And that represents three-point-five percent, um, merit adjustment that right now is being discussed. I will say though, that I did originally propose a three-dollar-an-hour increase across the board for all staff, with the exception of the director's position. And the reason for that is the competition that we are now facing in EMS, as well as the emergency services in general, but specifically to EMS, um, we are looking at, um, a significant undervalue of our current employees. There are private payers, private providers out there that have recently just up their hourly rate by four to five dollars an hour. Urgent cares which have blossomed in this area in the past eighteen to twenty-four months are now paying anywhere from four to six dollars an hour more per hour for an AEMT. And there's a local hospital that just started hiring AEMTs at seven dollars an hour more plus shift differentials. So the market is very tight. I currently have sixty hours of part-time hours that are open every week. That has to be filled with some of our part-time hours, some of our part-time staff picking up extra hours, as well as filling it with overtime or myself. And so this has been a constant challenge for the department all year. We have held four hiring sessions and I've netted three people. Um, we've had thirteen applicants and we've only hired or offered and hired, uh, three. So there is a lot of feedback from staff that has come in saying that, you know, they're, we are competing against those other entities. And just for a note, that this year, we were approved at town vote for, to take forty hours of part-time and make it into one full-time employee. I only had three internal applicants. I did not have anybody from the outside. And feedback that I received was that our hourly rate was too low. They wanted to work here, but they couldn't afford not to be paid a respective wage. Also, an internal candidate said that she was going to apply, but the same thing was also the case. So there was a lot of competition out there and this is something that we collectively need to look at to be able to continue to maintain the service that we have at this time. I would also note that there's also, for part-time hours, the Affordable Care Act, excuse me, prevents an individual from working more than one. excuse me, prevents an individual from working more than 1,560 hours in a measurement period, which is a federal calendar year, the fiscal calendar year. If they work more than that, then we have to offer them benefits, health benefits. So that's a cost, and so I have to weigh their hours and make sure we don't exceed that in an annual basis. For a weekly basis, then the Hampshire retirement system says you can't work more than 34 hours in a week, or it can't be more than 36, but we cut it at 34 hours in a week. Otherwise, if you do that with any consistent basis, they can turn around and say you have to offer them retirement benefits. So there are hard limits that I have to play with every week and every month and track this so that we don't get a benefit-related expense. So these are things that I have to work with every week to look at to ensure that we're able to still get an ambulance out the door, staffed and out the door, but at the same time, not go over those hard limits. So those are the big things with the wage line item that I'll talk to. There is a change in the computer service line item that is down because we purchased the software this year, so this year now it's just a, or for 2022, it's now just an ongoing licensing fee. The other big thing that we have, other significant change, is in contractual equipment. That is just how we've, our maintenance line item just went down a little bit because on the preventative maintenance contracts that we have, those things change around and alternate every other year. Our contractual vehicles is staying the same. There is an increase in the cell phone of $600 or just under $600. I would like to add another data phone to the department for use for our scheduling software, or excuse me, for scheduling purposes. And that would become a department phone that would be handed off from shift leader to shift leader or shift leader to captain, depending on how the staffing is for that day. But that's a relatively minor expense. And then the other large-scale item is, I shouldn't even say large-scale, but another hundred dollars up on oxygen is just, just balancing out what we've seen for oxygen use. And then technical supplies, you will notice that there is a $1,000 increase, and that's because the cost of disposable supplies has gone up considerably, and especially gloves. But all of our disposable, disposable supplies are going up. And I'm looking at a run rate this year of probably close to 23,000, so hoping that we can get by with hopefully just a $1,000 increase. The other thing that you'll notice is that in the gasoline side, that the usage or the amount of gallons I anticipate using is actually down a little bit, but it's the, now the cost of, with the rising cost of fuel, that's why that increase is there. So our gallon usage is about the same, or staying about the same. And then clothing and uniforms is the other big-ticket item that I have in there, and that's a $3,500 increase, but that is to purchase exterior jackets for the department. And then the other item that I have in there is the, a replacement paramedic response vehicle. And that's for 58,000, or 55,859, excuse me. So that's the, that was something that was proposed last year. That was cut, but this year, we're in a position where we still need that vehicle, and until we replace it, unfortunately, it will continue to be a budget line item, so. Those are the big things that I have, and I'll answer any questions.
Oh, Eric, what vehicle will we replace him? What's its age, mileage, et cetera? Don't you have, you have two or one?
We have two fleet vehicles. The one that we're looking to do is the paramedic response vehicle, and if you'll just bear with me a second. That vehicle is a 2010 Ford Explorer. Used to be operated by the Milford Police Department. It was their supervisor vehicle. And its mileage as of today is 1,114,288 miles.
Oh, 114,288?
Correct.
I had a question about the fuel.
Sure.
All the other departments are saying that they take advantage of the state bid price on fuel currently?
Yep, we do the same thing.
You do the same?
Yep.
But you're anticipating an increase in the fuel costs because the state bid price may go up? Or?
I, I submit the gallons, and so I will just ask the budget, excuse me, the finance director to comment on that.
Yeah, that's kind of a moving target. Paul, we, we take our lead from Captain Frye, and he lets us know whether the state or going through the WEX program is the most affordable. So there was a small increase in that because prices have been rising.
So how long is the state price good for? One year, two year, three year?
Craig. Captain Frye, do you know what the length is that the state holds the price on the gallons? Does that change daily?
No, I think it was a-
Was it two years?
I think it was a, a three-year contract. I'd have to take, but it's, it's a, it's a longer than a year at a time.
Right. And do we know when that contract's up, when that'll be renegotiated?
Yes, it will be because of what happened in the past. Most of the state municipalities went to WEX program, and then they realized that they didn't have the buy-in power that they had before that.
Thank you.
I'd like to add, though, that I believe that if at any time the gas locally drops lower than the state, we're not, we're not committed to getting it from the state.
Exactly.
So we're going to take it from wherever it's lowest.
Usually the state.
No, for a while here, actually, when we brought in WEX.
Right.
The state was very much higher. It was like 265, and we were getting it at $1.84 or something locally, so. It, it varies.
It does. I understand.
I believe, I'm sorry.
Is that an error under, expended to date at 6,000? Gasoline?
What are you looking at, Peg?
Oh, I'm sorry, gasoline expended to date 2021. It says 6,000. Is that six or should it be 16?
No, it's six. Those are accurate. Yeah, I don't touch those.
Gasoline?
Yep. That's how much ambulance is expended year-to-date.
Where did all the rest of it come from? I mean, really?
Where did what come from?
The gas.
Well, I think the price that we were paying initially at the beginning of the year, I don't remember when we switched over, I want to say it was April or May, when prices started going up, we were using, we were paying somewhere on the order of like $1.60 a gallon, significantly less because we're not paying the taxes through the WEX program. And then we transitioned over to the state, and I want to say the state for 2021 was $2.20 a gallon, so.
Mr. Labonte?
Eric, on your paramedic car, do you still have the transmission issues with both of the vehicles?
So the 2010 vehicle, yes, still does have the issue with the transmission. The vehicle that I drive, a 2013 former police car that has 110,000 miles on it, we did put an additive into the transmission, and that seems to have helped. I haven't noticed the stuttering, if you will, for lack of a better word, or the hiccuping. But it, as I was informed, that's probably just a matter of time before that eventually goes. But for now, it's running smoothly, so I'm keeping my fingers crossed.
On your 2010, seeing as you're only sitting at a little over 50% of your budget expended on contractual vehicles, is there a reason why you haven't fixed that one?
I personally, we have a quote, the lowest quote that we've received is $3,200 to replace the transmission with a remanufactured. I am of the opinion that I think that's a waste of money to put it into that vehicle when we're looking to replace the vehicle in its entirety. That's my professional opinion. What the board may choose to do with that information, I'm happy to comply with whatever they put forward.
In, in my personal opinion, I guess I feel, having a noted transmission issue in a vehicle with limited reverse, I almost think it's crazy that we still have it in service or have not fixed it, one of the two things.
Fair enough.
What year did you get that vehicle that you were going to replace?
The 2010. We picked that vehicle up, I want to say, in 2016. I believe we've had it in service for four years now, I believe.
So you've only put, say, 14,000 miles on it?
I believe we received it, yeah. No, I think 24,000 miles in that timeframe. I believe when we picked it up, it was, had 90,000 miles on it. Yeah. About 90,000 miles on it when we took it over from the police department. So we put 24,000 on it.
Okay, thank you. Further questions?
Where, where is volunteer pay now? How much are they getting?
There is no volunteer pay, and we haven't had volunteers since 2000. In 2016, we transitioned over to part-time. And I have, and so volunteers don't receive any pay, and-
They don't have it?
Well, but even when we had them over the past few years, they never received any pay. They received this, they received uniforms from us, but there was no pay.
Call pay, no? No call pay?
No call pay. Volunteer was zero, and I have one volunteer on the department at this time.
Further questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, folks. Have a good day.
And Chief Flaherty? Fire Department? Page 69?
Good afternoon. Um, we'll start right at the top of the budget. Fire Department operating budget. One of the major increases this year was going to be wages and full-time staff positions. I know I've communicated that with the Budget Advisory Committee, and during my departmental update, gave the board an update on that as well. So that would be the major increase in our budget at 28.1%. Overall, though, the budget's only up 9.6%, so there's other things that we were able to do in that budget. So we'll bring it right down to wages, and overtime would go up because currently we're projected to be over the allotted time. Paul, you have the most current projections by chance? Overtime budget, do you have the current projections?
I can't hear you, Ken, I'm sorry.
All right, overtime budget, do you have the current projections for me? I did print it.
Would that be the 20,000 listed in the budget, Paul?
It should be, unless it's-
It should. I believe it was projected to be right around $18,000, which is about $2,000 over from what we cut last year. So I put that back in the budget this year, so there's a little increase in that line item as well. So that's part of that 28% increase. And when you go down, the group benefits, nothing changed there. And as we go to the back page, the medical services stayed the same. So medical services is a big part of our intake process, so when you come into the fire service, we send you for NFPA physical to give you a baseline so that we can protect you and your family from years to come if anything happens to you because of all the cancer in today's industry. Contractual vehicles is up a little. Excuse me, contractual equipment is up a little. Parts and pieces and shipping is getting more expensive to get things to the fire department, so we have to pay a little bit more in that aspect of it as well. Contractual vehicles is up from 14 to 16. You can see we're already at 18. The reason is the vehicle, the fleets, the fleet's getting older. This year, we had to put tires on one apparatus. We had to do some major repairs on another for ball joints and things like that. And the unfortunate part is that engine two and three are sister trucks, so they were built at the same time. So we just fixed engine three, so I'm pretty sure engine two is going to be next because they're right around the same mileage. Preventative vehicle maintenance is up, is even. That's basically oil changes, state inspection, things like that. We utilized the DPW a lot this year, so that helped keep that budget line item down. Maintenance is all the same. We reduced a little bit of fire prevention materials. Due to COVID, we didn't have as many visitors this year, but hopefully next year we'll be back on track with that. Pretty much everything from there on the way down, with the exception of the training budget. The training budget did decrease, and one of the major impacts of that training budget being decreased was because the state has now offered a program for $155 instead of $900 to train a firefighter for firefighter level one, and then $135 for firefighter level two, down from 700. So we took that numbers and subtracted it from that line items. Other than that, there's no major increases in there.
Your year-to-date overtime is 16,200.
Yep. We're just over that.
I could go back to, you, you made a statement about something, and I thought you were talking about overtime at the time you said that it was cut like $2,000, and you added that back in.
Yeah.
But then you made a statement that that was part of the 28% increase.
I misspoke, sorry. The 26% is actually wages, and then the overtime is a separate line item.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the chief? Mr. Darji?
I'll say, Mr. Can you talk about how you're hiring three additional people this year?
Yep. So in the, in the plan was, when we talked at the departmental update, we had talked about adding staff to the full-time staff side of the house. Basically, what that's going to do is add three personnel, and what that does is allows the town to be protected seven days a week, including holidays, because right now you may not understand that the department is closed during holidays, and we, we like solely on the call force for the holiday staffing. Anytime after 4:30, it's a call side of the house, and anytime before 8 o'clock in the morning, it's the call side of the house. So we're struggling with the early morning and later in the afternoons with the call division because everybody has to get up and go to work. We basically call it the witching hour in the morning and the afternoons where people are committed to either go to work or come home. So we're kind of stuck. So what that does by adding three is put seven to seven or six to six, depending on the model which we choose, seven days a week, 365 days a year, which basically is going to limit the liability of the town basically for coverage for 50% of the time that we're operating. So that'll have three people staffed seven days a week for 12 hours a day, and then the call division would take up the evening hours.
So to clarify, you're adding how many people?
Three.
Three. Thank you. Mr. Labonte?
You say that will bring you to three staff, 12 hours a day, seven days a week. How many do you have on staff now for your eight hours a day?
So including myself, five.
So you just go, how would that work? You go down to three?
No, so, so Monday through Friday, we would still stay at the five, and basically it would be Saturday and Sunday would be the three people. Because we wouldn't change our schedule. My, my schedule, the other captain's schedule wouldn't change that much, and then we already have the two other firefighters unstaffed, plus the inspector, so we would roll those three into a rotating shift.
So on the additional four hours per weekday, is there going to be three on, on those extra three hours?
Well, there'd be four, because two of us would be eight hours a day, and the others would be 12.
Okay. Thank you.
And it would just roll, yeah. I know it's a little confusing, but it's the way the rotating schedule works that keeps that, the three minimum staffings. So you basically would have an operator, an officer, and a firefighter to answer the emergency calls.
You don't feel that will hurt your volunteer?
I don't. No, actually, I believe some of the people will be relieved, not so much that they, not can come, because they're still coming, because the second due piece of apparatus is still the most critical piece in the fire service, basically, because that supports the first team. First team does the initial attacks or, or services, and then that second team is the actual team that's supporting and backing up and making sure that we mitigate that hazard as quickly as possible. Also, there's a lot of our members that are very active in the community and other things, so they have to choose which direction to come. They either have to come to a fire call, they have to stay with their family, things of that nature. And getting those people to volunteer and come is getting tougher and tougher, as everybody knows.
How does that work if you have weekend staff as far as training? I assume they still come for training?
So they would be trained on staff, yep. So the full-time staff would be trained on staff during shift hours, and then they would interact with the Monday through, well, we have drill now, as we've, we've changed the drill a little bit, so they drill twice a month now, so they would come in one of those drill nights. That would be incorporated into their shift, basically.
So that wouldn't be overtime coming in for-
It might be, depending on, on the call or where they roll in the shift, but that would be included in that other $2,000 that we just discussed prior.
Okay.
Any further questions?
I did have a question.
Yes.
Lincoln came to us earlier and talked about, um, an inspection type person. I know you do a lot of inspections.
I do, the health officer's side, yes.
I know that. Uh, how would that work out? Would it be better for you continue to do that with more staff who are also certified firefighters? Or to hire someone who's an environmental specialist? How would it work out?
So again, it's gonna come down to what the town decides they want to provide for services. Currently, I wear three different hats. I'm the fire chief, the emergency management director, and the health officer. Just like a Swiss Army knife, they're good for a lot of different things, but they're not good at one thing in particular, right? So I, one areas have to struggle versus the other areas. And one of those areas right now that they're struggling on is the health side of it. With COVID, that really put us in arrears. I don't remember exactly, Paul, but we submitted hours upon hours, probably close to forty-five thousand dollars worth of payroll back to the, to the COVID relief. So that's how much I was, at the time, was close to forty hours a week just doing the COVID investigations and all the reporting and, and meetings and things like that. So what, what we're missing out on is the population that needs our help, the elderly services part of it, the, the hoarding part of it. We do a lot of mold complaints. I probably do two mold complaints a week. Uh, we have a tremendous amount of, um, rental properties in, in the town, so we do a lot of those inspections as well. Any foster care inspection, we take care of with the health side of it, that's also done. Um, the initial restaurant investigations for, any complaint is done in our office, and then if it needs to go further than that, we, we notify the state. The state then makes a decision, they'll come out and do the inspection.
So would some of that be taken over by this new position in...
It, we could do something similar to that, or I could, we could shed this, or share the load more productive, I, I guess, if you would.
Be more specific in the types of inspections you would do.
Right, well, so our inspections now are, we do a tremendous amount of inspection between gas pipe and mechanical, and so that's a whole different division. Those, that gentleman that does the inspection does nothing with the health side of it. They're two different sections. That's usually done by myself. And the other, uh, we do have a deputy, and it's the call assistant fire chief when he's available to help and assist.
Thank you.
So just to get clarification, follow-up on that, because Lincoln was talking about how not having this health environmental officer was, was costing significant time to the fire department.
Right.
Are you still saying that if we decided to go the route of getting a health environmental, did we still need to have the fire department involved?
We would not.
Okay, so...
That would free me up a third of my time to go back.
That's all.
Okay, so my, my follow-up question then is, how is that going to affect, or, or would it not affect the three people that you, that you want to get full-time?
It would not affect them. They're there to answer the emergency calls. It would give me more time to do the administrative functions that my job requires.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent.
And next we have, uh, Public Works.
Uh, everybody, if you please note that, um, Public Works actually starts on page seventy-seven.
Well versed in everything by now.
Got a way to start the job under fire, right?
Sorry. Good afternoon, my name's Leo Assad. I'm the, uh, new Public Works Director. So be nice. It's only my first week, so I don't know too, too much, but I went through my first rainstorm yesterday and seen a lot of drainage problems, so I got, I know that. The only thing that I've seen that, um, on the budget, I really can't speak too much about, um, is there's a few line items that, uh, like paving, drainage, uh, line striping, um, and a couple of more that, um, should be increased because there's not enough money there for my professional, being a outside, dealing with mass DOT and, um, other towns and that being my industry. So with that, um, you guys ask me questions, and hopefully I can answer them.
Given, given the cost of, uh, oil and things like that that go into making the paving material, do you see a big increase in that cost of paving material?
Asphalt motion, yeah. Yeah, that goes up. The state gives us, uh, like, um, up to five hundred and, it, it's a big, it's a formula.
Right.
That goes up, and it goes up in private industry. It fluctuates, um, not really daily, but, um, like monthly. And with the gas going up now, the byproducts for the oil is what is used for the asphalt material, um, that's, that's going up a lot. Next year it'll be real high. I mean, I bet, probably, um, I don't know what the town pays, but they always get a better price. I bet the town's probably around anywheres between fifty-eight to sixty-five dollars a ton. And I bet by next year, it'll be at least close to seventy, sixty-eight, seventy dollars a ton. You can't pave much with a ton, you know? And that's, that's purchased, that's not lay down. Lay down would be anywheres between ninety-five and one-twenty-five a ton, you know? So, it's, I mean, it's not, you can't just overlay a lot of these roads. I mean, I've been living in town many years, and there's a lot of roads that need it bad. And I know being in town, you can't, you can't do it the right way all the time. You gotta Band-Aid it, but I'd like to do it the best way that we can anyways.
Better to do it the right way once.
It is, it is. But it's expensive, and it's, it's a process, and, you know, but, um, we'll work on it. We'll, we'll get it. We'll get it.
So I guess this is for the business administrator. I, I noticed in the ambulance budget, their, their cost of fuel went up. Has it gone up also for highway department and police department, and is that in the town budget or in individual budgets?
First of all, Mr. Bartolucci, we're not in the school district. I am not the business administrator.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're not the business administrator. My fault, years and years of using that term in my other business.
I was just giving you a hard time, but that's what I was in Nashville.
Used to be a business administrator.
There you go. Um, no, every, every department has its own budget, and they get the same direction from Captain Frye as to whether or not to use the state or the WEX, or the local, depending on whatever's lowest.
So where are we with the highway department?
In regards to...
What we're using, increases, necessary, not necessary. If we have a bad winter and we do a lot of plowing, we're using a lot of fuel.
Do you have another question while I look this up?
It'd be safe to assume that gas prices being uniform across, you know, for everybody, and that, oh, everybody's budget should reflect some sort of increase if...
Yep. Everybody's budget, since fuel is a, a, you know, a specific price, it's not different for, per department. Depending on what you use, whether, I mean, diesel and obviously unleaded, then those types, depends on type of fuel, might be a little bit different, but the prices are gonna be same across, you know, everybody. So it's, it's safe to say that everybody's budget's probably gonna show a, a bit of an uptick in fuel pri, in, in fuel just because of the, the way the inflation's going right now with it. So if, you know, if everybody went up two percent, but they might have figured out a way, depending on what type of equipment they have, uh, might not as be, it might not be exactly the same across, but all should probably see a bit of an increase.
I know diesel's gone up quite a bit. I drive a truck that has a diesel, so...
And looking at it year-to-date, um, for their gasoline, on a budget of twenty-six thousand six twenty, they've only utilized just under eight thousand dollars. So they're in the same boat as the ambulance, just under eight thousand. Uh, and the diesel, uh, the budget was just under thirty-five thousand, and they're at twenty-two thousand year-to-date.
And that has to take us through which months?
Through the end of December.
Okay.
And you'll, you'll see all those figures under highways and streets on page ninety?
Each department has their own.
I didn't, well, we, we started out talking about government buildings, so...
No, I understand. I'm just letting you know, e, each DPW department has their own fuel, just so you didn't go on one.
Thank you all.
Uh, one, one question, Leo. Um, understand that the supply chain these days, it's, it's difficult to get pipes. Have we, have we accounted for any of that, uh, in, in the budget as to, well, timing and cost?
You mean for, like, if we had a pipe project to do?
If we need, if we needed to replace culverts.
Culverts and stuff. Um, well, I noticed the, um, at the, uh, DPW, they have a good, uh, stockpile on like twelve-inch, fifteen, eighteen, I think up to twenty-four. I mean, I didn't measure each pipe, but they got, um, for an emergency, you know, but to do a, a job, job, like if we wanted to, you know, go in and, um, redesign an existing neighborhood or something. In private industry, they were, we were out, depending what we wanted for pipe, um, we were probably out about two months behind to get PVC pipe, ADS or something like that, depends what it is. Um, but I mean, they, they'll come up with it. They want to make the sale too, but I mean, it's just, it, it's not the end of the world, you know? Um, we got, we got, I noticed that they got a good stockpile. We got a good stockpile of pipe and structures, so that's a good thing.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Mr. Freel?
Uh, I know about a month or two ago, we were talking, I think, Mr. Anton in the office, and we were not expecting to do all the resurfacing that we thought we were gonna be scheduled for, due to the rain and all the stuff we had. But it looks like we expended the full one-hundred ninety-six, eight hundred, like, the whole budget for resurfacing? Is that, um, are you, so that all got done, and what I'm asking is, in the past, we've had four hundred thousand dollar warrant articles for additional paving. Are we planning on doing a warrant article, one, to do that, and two, are we, um, looking to maybe increase the resurfacing so that we can cover some of the roads that are really bad in the town? Like, I don't know why we're not just trying to move this up from two hundred thousand and put it at four hundred thousand in the budget. I, I don't, the roads are horrible, and I don't know how we can't sit here and want to increase at least that line for the resurfacing.
Well, the, um, from what I understand, um, they had, uh, four or five roads for last year to do, and they didn't get them done because they ran out. I think they only did two, so this, and, and ask me because I really don't know.
Ran out of funds, you mean?
Ran out of funds, right, yeah. So, um, with this year, they'll, uh, you know, we'll, we'll continue it, but I mean, it's, again, it's, like, if I wanna do a project or something, I mean, I, I can't, I gotta wait, you know? There's just, you know, Hudson's got almost a million dollars on a paving budget. Uh, when I was in Hooksett, it was probably, um, I think it was, yeah, I don't remember, it was so long ago, it was about five hundred.
Resurfacing?
For resurfacing, yeah. And then along with that was, that just covered resurfacing and paving. It didn't cover the drainage improvements, didn't cover, we had other line items, which I see in, in Milford here, we have also, but, uh, we would fund that every year, and then, uh, it would, it would save on, on projects, you know, uh, going out to bid and stuff. But, uh, yeah, that, and, uh, like I said too, I mean, um, the line striping, it's, I mean, line striping is a safety hazard for, for buses and kids and stuff, you know? I mean, there's a lot of, and this town, I don't, you know, that needs to be done, that, that ain't done, and should be done, fog lines and stuff. It's, it's a safety thing, you know? But, yeah.
Mr. Labonte?
I guess just to go to Mr. Freel's point, in, um, Mr. Clabber, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I, in our paving budget, you see the one ninety-six there. I, in truth, there's like three twenty-something, i, if you add up between the hot top supplies and all of that stuff. I believe that's what we based it on.
A four hundred, includes all, includes the...
Three twenty-something, give or take?
Yep, the block grant.
So my question to you, Paul, what, what do we have left over out of that? Didn't we have over a hundred and something thousand dollars left out of the paving that did not get completed this year?
I'd, I'd have to go through all the line items.
Okay. Cause I, I thought there was talk on encumbering that as far as to next year. Either way, I just wanted to let you know that, meaning it, it's not the one ninety-six.
It's not the one, and I thought it was gonna be more too, but I, I just don't know why. I guess they're breaking it all down for all the supplies, I get that, but if there is a surplus, then is that gonna go towards additional funds next year?
Hopefully.
To, to fix the roads?
Hopefully, yes.
Oh, okay, yeah. All right.
Mr. Darji? Let's hope.
Speaking of Mr. Freel's point, uh, I think we ought to leave the budget as it is with the three hundred and twenty thousand spread over in different things, and have a separate warrant article for four hundred thousand, uh, mainly because I'm worried about the default budget. If we, already the budget's, I assume, going up a lot. There's a lot of areas where, um, things are going up. And another four hundred thousand on top of everything else will make the increase very large and make, uh, the voters, uh, the default budget look enticing. So I think we ought to have a separate warrant article, four hundred thousand.
I agree.
To bump it up.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, see how that goes.
Yeah. And let them decide.
It failed last year, you know, so it, you know, people are...
But it passed the year prior.
The year prior, it passed, passed comfortably.
Right.
It got voted down this past year, or this year.
Mr. Labonte?
And I guess that's actually kind of what I wanted to speak to, Mr. Shannon, the fact of it getting voted down. I know this is a big ask, Leo, seeing as you're very new to the job. Do, do you feel that it would be possible to come up with a, um, what I'm gonna call a tentative plan a, as far as paving on what you'd like to do next year by deliberative session? And I guess that, the, which is in February. I, I guess the reason why I'm asking is if we did go with a warrant article, like you're saying, I, I believe a lot of people were uncomfortable last year with a four hundred thousand dollar road warrant article, not because they didn't think we needed it done, but because nothing was said on what was going to be done. And I think that that's a big thing, that if people don't know what's gonna get done, they typically don't wanna, they don't wanna pass money if they don't know what it's going for.
Correct. I mean, it makes a lot of sense. I mean, that, that makes sense. I mean, I, yeah, I think so. I mean, this is...
Like I said, I know it's a big ask, you, you're just starting, but I didn't know what resources you had.
I, I live in town, so I know some of the roads that are bad, but I don't know all of them. Um, I'd like to implement some type of road management system, but, uh, there's a, um, there's a software, I think, they already have. I figure...
Cartograph, I think?
Yes, that's what I heard, yeah. I don't know how good, I, I don't know anything about it, you know? Um, but I mean, I could, by February, yeah. I, I should be able to give, uh, some type of list for roads that'll, uh...
Mr. Freel?
So the only thing I'm wondering on, what you're saying as far as if, if the town people knew what roads were gonna get worked on, maybe, or that we're gonna fix Boss Road, this road, that road. The problem is, I, I, I'm wondering if you could even do that, because let's say some emergency happens on another road in between then. If the warrant article passes for only five roads that are lane, are named, could you go to another road that's not named?
I gue, I guess I'm not specifically putting up to, to list in the warrant article what is getting done. Basically, you have a fluid plan, understanding that we live in New England, that, that things change due to many circumstances, from frost to water main breaks to all of that stuff.
Karen?
I guess I first want to clarify, are you three a proponent of the warrant article over increasing the budget?
Say that again.
Are you a proponent of having a warrant article for the roads over increasing the budget?
I'd like to do, I'd like to do both. I'd increase the budget a little.
In, in a perfect world, I'd like to do both. I guess I'm just gonna, I'm gonna disagree with you somewhat on the warrant article issue, and I'll tell you why, is because for years I've been saying to increase the paving budget, it's a way of doing business. It's never gonna go away in this town. We are always gonna have to repair our roads. It's why we're behind. It's why we had to have that big warrant article. And quite frankly, people in this town have warrant article fatigue. We put so many big items, and at a certain point, they just say no to everything, and that's bad for the town. So I would budgetarily say, possibly you do a little of both, right? You, you increase and you have a smaller warrant article. I, and then I worry about no, no means no if it doesn't pass as well. I think it's dangerous just doing one big warrant article, and you add a, you, you add a ton of debt at once, and so it's a, a ten-year note, but the, but the work is not for ten years. So you finish your work, and then you're still paying on it for years, and you wanna come back to the taxpayers and ask for more money with another warrant, I think you're digging yourself a hole.
Correct me if I'm wrong, last year, that was a four hundred thousand dollar cash warrant article, wasn't it?
Correct.
Was it cash?
Yeah.
It was cash. It was a one-year, not, not a bond.
Okay.
So to, to your point, I understand that, meaning as far as paying on a ten-year bond. I, I'm open to both avenues. I think the biggest thing, and I think we haven't had this in a long time, is a tentative plan, not concrete, but we gotta have a tentative plan on what's given to us on where we anticipate the money to go.
But I, but my understanding with the work that was done years ago on the roads, the plan that was drawn out, we had a plan for the roads. Maybe it wasn't specific to the warrant article, but wasn't there a plan specific to the roads and which ones were most traveled, and which ones were going to be attacked first? There was a plan. It was posted down in Town Hall.
That a lot of the times was completed work, not projected work.
I don't agree at all.
I don't think that's correct.
Absolutely had projected work.
Sir, if I may.
Shannon?
Yes, sir. Uh, to answer your question, it's, uh, ninety-two thousand dollars left to encumber for paving.
Further questions?
So, so just follow-up question. So if we have a warrant article, but not anything in the budget, and the town defeats the warrant article, how do we pave the roads?
Can, can I answer part of that?
Yeah, please.
I'm, I, I don't think any one of the five of us over here are looking to take it out of the budget. I think we're looking to still keep, and I don't mean to speak for you guys, so feel free to chime in. I, it's of my opinion, if, if...
so feel free to chime in. It's of my opinion, if we leave that 300 and something thousand dollars in the budget, the warrant article would be additional on top of that.
But again, if that warrant article in addition gets defeated, then we're still behind in fixing our roads, even though we had the 300,000 in the budget.
I, I agree, but unfortunately, if you raise it in the budget and you lose the warrant article and the budget, now you're running under a default budget.
You don't really lose it in the budget, you just have to move money around in the budget in order to accomplish something.
I guess it depends...
Because the budget is a bottom-line budget, and the town administration has the ability to take funds from other places if necessary in order to accomplish something that needs to be done. That, that's, that's true fact, I believe. So where are we if we have an additional $400,000 in the budget? What does that do to the tax rate? Roughly?
I'm sorry?
If we put an additional $400,000 in a bottom-line budget, what does it do to a tax rate? Roughly?
Not very much. If 150 was 1, was 10 cents, so 25 cents, 25 cents?
$24.71.
Thank you.
It's 25 cents per thousand, right?
I just, I feel like we're always playing catch-up with our roads, and we never get there.
I personally feel that we really should be jumping on that. Like, if we have 100,000 left over and we didn't spend it, the, the next year's budget should be, should be 400 and whatever, add 100,000 or whatever it was. And if it, you know, if it, it's going to raise the budget, and you're right, it could go to the default budget, but at the end of the day, even with the default budget, the road should be taken care of. We're just, it's just making it worse so that eventually it's going to cost even more to fix the roads. So maybe instead of resurfacing, we've got to pull the whole road up and put a whole new base coat down. I mean, if we don't take care of it preventative maintenance, it's going to cost more overall, over time.
Rather than debate this now, has anyone got any questions for Mr. Lassad?
No, I don't.
I didn't hear him, what he said.
He said, "Do you have a question for Leon?"
Welcome on board, Leo.
Thank you very much.
I just mentioned one thing for you, Larry. The warrant article, as we had before, was based on a plan from Ricky, and we had seen the plan over and over of what he's, his thoughts by the cardiograph data showed which roads were the most critical. And so he laid out a plan, and you'll have that with Mary down there. Basically, it was just, so the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 400,000 to reconstruct roads as detailed using cardiograph data by the Department of Public Works. This is a non-lapsing appropriation, so it can be next year also, and went from there. And again, the estimated tax impact was 25 cents. Now, wait a minute, $25?
25.
On an evaluation of 100. So, yeah, that's how we've been doing it in the past, okay?
Further questions? Okay, would you like to go on to cemeteries?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Most of, if you look through his budget, most of them are, there's no change to any of them. If, if anybody's made notes and has a specific question about one of the items, that might be a little bit faster way to go about doing this. If anybody saw something that they thought was out of whack or didn't look right to them. Most of his are, they're pretty, they've stayed flat, so there's no increases or decreases.
So we'll open it up. Does anyone have any questions on any part of the DPW area?
Just to remind you all, if you have questions, the BAC, as always, if you funnel them through Mr. Pank, he'll send them to, to Paul and myself, and we'll get you those answers back. If, you, you know, wake up in the middle of the night in a cold sweat because you forgot to ask about a truck or something, just feel free to send that to us, and we'll get it answered if you forget something.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Under wages, I know there's a new guy there, I met with him yesterday, and a very nice man. Does that include his wage increase, salary increase?
This is his new salary, isn't it, the new DPW salary?
I, I haven't even seen that information yet. He just started Monday.
Is his new salary on, in this material?
Not yet.
Not yet, no.
Under cemeteries, the new cemetery guy?
Oh, the new cemetery guy, I'm...
No, I'm sorry, not, no, cemetery.
Yes, the new, every other department's wage and salary line is reflective of their current staffing.
Okay. Because the, the price went down, I was, I mean, the totals went down under cemetery for full-time wages, I was wondering if that included their raise?
Yeah, there was, there was adjustments that were made last year, I'm sorry, this year, with a per diem, not a per diem employee, a loader, where they reallocated their hours, so you'll see some ups and downs throughout the DPW budgets.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Labonte?
One of my other questions comes down to, it's going to be actually on page 88, it's going to be at the top of the page, it's going to be on their other contracted services. It's a line item I had questioned last year, $2,000 that was in there for the prisoner's work cost. I believe that program has been gone for three years now, but yet we still continue to allocate money into it.
So as, as Mr. Shannon pointed out, because of the change in directors, we kept the budgets all flat.
Okay.
So we can absolutely take a look at that.
Okay. One of the other ones that I noticed was page 89. Where did it go? Oh, rentals and leases on page 89. As you all remember, we had a warrant article to replace a loader back in March, and part of the process was going to be, we got a credit for the rental from the vendor that we had used for our prior year, and it was said that going forward, that the rental would be taken out of future budget, meaning that we would no longer need the rental in the budget because we now own the loader. I believe that was $18,000.
Yeah, we can take a look at that. I'm not sure what Mr. Anton was, had earmarked that for, if anything, at this point.
Okay, can I speak on that from my personal?
Sure.
I mean, I don't know what the, what it's there for, whatever, and I understand what you're talking about, the loader, but I'd like to leave it there for the simple reason that if we are going to start doing some roadwork in town ourselves, that little rubber tire backhoe they have is, is not going to cut it for production. And at least I'd have that to rent a rubber tire excavator, if need be, to handle the workforce that I want to do with it, you know? For big pipelines and, you know, that, that little rubber tire they got is, it's good for graves, you know?
And I'm okay with conversation. I'm just going back to, back in March, we had that, as far as that they were going to talk about reducing it.
Yeah.
Once again, if somebody in my eyes justifies a plan for it, then I'm negotiable to...
No, no, I understand everything you, you're saying, but if it's there, I'd like to leave it there, only because I don't know what we're going to even do for jobs, or what it's going to entail, but I know if we're going to do what I'm liking to do, which is a lot more drainage work and stuff in town, to repair some of these roads before we pave them, we're going to need something that can handle it.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
One thing that Mr. Anton did tell us is that the salt budget was probably going to be underfunded for next year by about 82,500 because of the increase in costs. It's not reflected in this budget, but it's something we'll have to address between now and when we finalize the budget.
Yeah, I think salt prices went up $22 a ton, our cost. Municipal is cheaper than...
22.50 a ton, our cost went up.
Oh, what line item is that?
That's back on highways and streets.
That's mine.
Page 90, I think?
Yes. Page 90, line item 12, 702, 563, 720. Thank you. My other question I had goes back, starting on page 90, capital outlay vehicles. In your budget, you have a line item for $68,503. I, I just didn't know if it was ever established what that was going to be for a vehicle. I know last year we had that in, and I think we expended on a higher-priced vehicle than what we originally talked about, but I guess, I'd just be curious to see what that vehicle's going to be.
Mr. Chair, if I may? So that's another line item that Mr. Anton indicated he would like to bring up to $100,000, so it's actually underfunded based on the current needs of the vehicle fleet at the Highway and Streets Department for vehicles that have not passed inspection and, and other various issues that they're dealing with down there.
And can we get a list of those vehicles?
Did you get that email?
I got the email, but none that were taken out of service.
Oh, okay, I see what you're asking, okay.
And, Mr. Claberry, is there a way you can also explain our total capital outlay on vehicles? Budgeted last year was 68,503, but expended was 246,000. I'm sure that you have a great explanation, I just don't know how it comes to that.
So because we have to gross-based budget, the total cost of the, the flat, the wheel loader that we bought, it shows up on that line item in a gross amount. There's an offsetting revenue on the other side.
Excellent. I knew you'd have a great answer for it. Sidewalk maintenance was my other question. And I guess this is more of a comment than anything. In the past, it always shows that nuns, that no money out of that $5,000 is expended on sidewalk maintenance. I guess I'd just like to make a comment, I'd love to see some sidewalk maintenance.
You probably will.
Further questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Was it as painful as what you thought it was going to be?
Not this year.
Like John said, next year will be worse.
I am enjoying my honeymoon.
Leo?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to Administration and Finance, this on page two.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. As you all know, we don't have a lot of increases on there. I would ask you, when you're dealing with my department, probably his too, instead of looking at the actual, the 14% might freak you out, but you look over and it's only really a $200 or $300 increase because it's such a low number, so. We don't really have a lot, obviously, the wage increase that we're asking for for town employees is, is going to be the biggest part of our increase. There's also some increases with printing, either the town reports or the voting guides. We're currently seeking, somebody that we, Tina and I had a meeting with the printer last week, so we'll try to get that nailed down as far as doing the voting guides for next year. We had some trouble last year that we had to do some redos, and the postage went up. I mean, there were some reasons why that went up, but we're hoping to can get a better number for that so we can be a lot more on target with that one. We were sort of OBE on that one, though.
What was the wage increase that was factored in?
Across the board for town, it's 3.5%.
3.?
Non-union, 3.5.
Oh, non-union, 3.5.
Non-union, 3.5?
That CPI is right around 3.5 and so, yeah, and climbing, so that actually might be, you know, a little low for what we should have asked for. But that's for non-union. Now, we're starting negotiations with Teamsters next week, and that will be on the warrants, the approval of the new CBA, and then next year, we have the Police Union and ASMEs up next year, just to give you a heads-up on that. So that, Teamsters will be on this year's warrants to get approval from the town for the CBA, and the Police Union will be on the year after that. So I will know what those numbers are, at least for Teamsters this year, so we'll make adjustments as needed. Again, that, that meeting's coming up next week. The only other real thing, the legal, we're kind of holding our own. We've had some expenditures that we weren't counting on this year, dealing around with citizens' interests as far as communications and how we're going to do that, so. Between that and then an in-house, an internal thing that we had to take care of. It went up a little bit, we're still under what we've budgeted for the year, but you can see there on page five, you were asking about how they were, who had different line items for legal. You'll see them there. Community Development, ASME, they all have a bit. Again, those are pretty, those are up, up a touch, but again, with union negotiations coming up, we'll make sure we use those.
Just a general question on legal, if I might. Do we have a contracted agreement with an attorney, or is it depending on how many legal cases we have?
It just depends on how much we, because a lot of them we don't have, it's like we're getting sued all the time or anything like that. A lot of them are just legal questions. Like I said, the biggest user of it, and I've, admin's been up this year just because of, I mentioned with communications, there were some questions from, from citizens that had to be answered, and we will make sure we're giving them the best answers. So it all just depends, like, the next year, if everything's quiet, we could really underuse it. So again, it's best guess using the last three to five years, sort of, to get an average of where it needs to be.
So do we, do we normally contract with different law offices depending on the topic or issue at hand, or is it the same?
No, sir. Well, we have, in general, we have Town Council.
Right.
And that's Mr. Radigan from Donahue-Tucker, and he, he works for the town in general, water, he'll answer questions for, basically anybody, Milford-wise. Now, Community Development does do some stuff with different firms depending on what they're getting into, that are more specialized in certain areas. So they're the only ones that use anybody other than Town Council that I'm aware of. I don't think anybody else does. So we have, we have an agreement with, with Donahue-Tucker and, and Mr. Radigan, and specifically, that's, that's who we go to first. Community Development, if you want to have a question for Lincoln specifically about the other firm he might use, just send it in, we'll make sure he gets an answer for you. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. And then you will notice, I don't know if this really falls under admin or not, but MAC Base is going up about, is it 38,000, Craig, give or take? They're asking for another 38,000 MAC Base, this, coming up for 22.
Is that our share or...?
That's our share. Which sits at about 71.3%. I know they just started really talking about budget. I don't know how, no, they haven't really, so. Craig, obviously, is our Board of Governors rep, and he can brief the BOC and BAC if they want it at another time. But that's what they're asking for this year, it's about 38.
That stays the same every year.
Yeah, that stays the same.
A general question, if the warrant article on the HVAC passes for the Town Hall, is that this year?
It's not, there's not one on for the Town Hall this year that I'm aware of.
Did we change that to next year or what?
Yes, ma'am, that's my understanding right now.
Oh, okay.
The only HVAC I'm aware of is for the library.
Okay. Will you have to vacate the building while it's being done?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
You have to vacate the building while it's being done?
Not to my knowledge, but I will, obviously, we would have that question answered before we agreed on who we were going to go with.
Anything else?
I can't really say much, sir. I don't know if Paul's got it.
Any questions for the town administrator?
Can I just jump back to Paul for a minute, and then I'll fall asleep, because I haven't had my sleep. I had a question back on, on Public Works and the vehicles, where you say that's where the wheel loader purchase went, okay, and that's why it went from 68,000 to 246,000?
Correct.
Okay. That's the warrant article that was in there, is that what that wheel loader?
Yeah, that was the wheel bucket loader that we used the capital reserve fund to bring the net purchase price down to 26,118. But the gross amount gets put on that line, and then there's an offsetting revenue in the revenue section.
Because I've never heard of a warrant article buying a vehicle going, sitting there.
Further questions?
Seems to me that that means that what we've done is used budget money to buy it.
We haven't, because there's an offset...
Not warrant article money.
There was an offsetting withdrawal from the capital reserve funds.
There was actually budget money used for that also.
No, it was budget money, not warrant article, not separate. Right?
They took money out of the capital reserve to knock it down to 26,000, which came out of budget. Correct.
So how much came out of the budget, 26,000?
26,118.
Okay, so then how still did it go from 68 to 246?
Because the gross amount, you have to gross-based budget, so the full value of the bucket loader was in that line item, and there's an offsetting revenue on the revenue side.
So what offsetting revenue goes to what, fund balance?
No, capital reserves, $120,000.
Oh, it got taken from there?
Yeah.
Got taken from capital reserve?
Right.
And paid for this?
Mm-hmm.
I still don't see how that goes to 246. I've never seen that before. I, okay. Doesn't make sense to me.
Just a quick question.
Because it didn't come out of the budget.
I'm, I'm sorry?
The money didn't come out of the budget, it came out of capital reserve.
$26,000 came from the budget.
Right.
The rest of the 120 or whatever came from the capital reserve, which equals up to 126, 146 or whatever. Right.
So the only...
That was added to that line item, so on the negative side of the ledger, you added So on the negative side of the ledger, you added the one, whatever it was. And then on the positive side, we added the one twenty-six, the one twenty back, so at the end of the day, we only spent twenty-six thousand dollars out of budget money. The rest of it came from the capital reserve.
I've never seen that with any other vehicle purchase. Have you people, I mean, you're the selectman, do you understand what that is?
I understand what you're saying.
I can't say that I've seen it, but I, I don't, I'm not saying it didn't happen, I'd have to go back through and look, Greg. I do have one more question for you guys. Sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Pank.
Mr. Pank first?
Yes, sir. Do we have any idea, generally, when the CIP is going to be coming out, so that we can look at it?
It comes out every two months. So I can check and see when the latest and greatest will be.
You saying capital improvement, or the?
I'm sorry, the capital improvement.
Capital improvement?
CIP.
Oh. As I think Lincoln touched on before, the, the final's gonna go to the planning board here very shortly, because they had to make some adjustments or something, if I remember what Lincoln said earlier today correctly, so it should be fairly soon.
Okay, like, month, or?
He made it sound like it'd be less than that, like, the next planning board meeting, they were gonna be, it was gonna come up to be settled. So I'm not sure, I think there's a-
We meet this week?
This week, this week, yeah, Mr. Frill's actually the, on that committee, so.
Okay.
I thought Lincoln said the December meeting, the first December meeting.
Within four weeks or so. Before Christmas, it's the best I can do for you.
Oh, great, okay, and the other question I have for you.
Yes, sir.
Just, just a general question. Any idea, can you give us an idea of what we're talking about? I don't care about the minor warrant articles, what I'm looking for, we all know that the, the big warrant articles are the ones that really generate the tax, that's gonna cause people tax money.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we, we usually get that out really late. Is there any chance that we could, that the BAC could get an idea of what warrant articles we're facing? I know a couple that we might be facing.
You will, you will have them along with the BOs this week. There are, there are two big ones. It's the library, the fire truck, obviously. And then from there, other than the, the town operating budget, the water and sewer budgets, the next item down is a forty thousand dollar capital reserve. So there are not many top-end warrant articles on this year as it stands right now, I can't speak to petitions or anything like that, but as far as the town goes, if, if you don't count budget and all the capital reserve stuff and fireworks, there's two.
Okay.
And once the libraries-
In a week or so?
Yes, sir, it'll be on the agenda for the twenty-second, that's our plan anyway as it stands right now.
And we have a meeting on the twenty-third, so.
I can, I can get it to you Monday, our draft version.
Okay.
It's, it's not fully fleshed out yet, obviously, but it's, it's a really good placeholder, it's probably about an eighty-five percent solution at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Labonte?
Mr. Claberry, this question would be for you, on the revenue side. Solid waste revenues, line twelve, nine oh one, four six zero, five hundred. Is there a way we can change out the sludge hauling fees for water utilities? We have that in as expected revenue. And we haven't had that in two years, because, or this is our second year not having any, because they outsource to their own vendor.
What page do you want, please?
This is not in the budget, this is-
On the revenue report?
In the revenue report, meaning the line item I can give you if you'd like.
Chris, what page do you want?
It's not in the budget. Correct.
So on the budget report, I'm sorry, on the revenue report, what, what page number, Chris?
I don't know if he ever sent it to you, I have a copy that he had sent to me at one point back months ago. But it was just one thing I was looking at, correct me if I'm wrong, if we still have it in as anticipated revenue, and if we don't get it in, then that would show us a seventeen thousand dollar loss for us, correct?
So, what page number on the revenue report?
If I can, can I give you the line item of what it is?
Sure, yep.
The line item is gonna be twelve, nine oh one, four six zero, five hundred. The name is gonna be sludge hauling fees for wastewater treatment facility. And if I understand it right, and if I don't understand any of it right, let me know, but I believe that that shows as an anticipated seventeen thousand dollar income for us, and we don't, I don't believe we get anything from it.
I'll check into that. Is it gems? Yeah, I believe so, I'm not sure, yeah.
Just so you know, that does fall under solid waste, meaning not, not water utilities budget, that's our transfer station budget.
Is there wastewater?
I'm sorry, what did you want to say?
Hey, further questions? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Claberry, do you have anything on finance?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Daniels. My budget starts on page eighteen. Aside from the proposed increase for non-union, my budget is flat. We are still expecting, under the auditing services, a single audit requirement by the federal government for anything, any municipality that receives over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds, which of course, we're in the ARPA era, and last year was the CARES Act. So that will stay on there at some point, when all these programs dwindle down and the pandemic and the world gets back in order, that ten thousand will drop off my budget. So it will be on again for next year, of course, because we have the second of the tranche payments next June or July. So everything else is flat, went up a little bit just on postage, because of the postage increase. So the overall cost for finance and accounting is three point one percent. Are there any questions on the finance and accounting budget before we move to tax collection?
Seeing none.
Oh, wait a minute, don't, don't go a little further. I just, I can't find where I just saw it, but let me ask you about the time clock. Annual, annual cost, I think we're on-
On page eighteen, bottom of the page.
Thank you. Annual GIF cost for electronic timekeeping support, twenty-three thousand two oh five. There was some consideration when that was established, and most of us were still on that committee. Are we still keeping that time clock? And at the same time, is it, is it worth keeping?
So yes, we are keeping it at this point. We're gonna continue to assess it. If we can find a solution that better need, that better, that better fits some of our departments. It's very difficult to find a timekeeping system electronically that takes care of all the needs of this town. And between our emergency services, our DPW, obviously, the nine-to-five crew, it's pretty straightforward, pretty much any software can take care of that, but we're constantly assessing that, we're constantly trying to make sure that the departments are, you know, enforcing the employees, making sure they punch in at the proper times and punch out at the proper times.
So all departments are now using it?
There are two that aren't.
Okay.
Okay. Further questions?
Tax collection is, starts on page twenty-two, and once again, that is a fairly flat budget. There was some increases just in office supplies and basically the, anything involved with sending out your tax bills, those costs have gone up, so along with those costs and the postage costs for sending out lien notices, the tax bills themselves, the preliminary tax bill that's due on July first, and of course, the final tax bill, which is due on or about December first this year, it's gonna be December thirteenth.
Did she say December thirteenth?
And other than that, so that reflects a two point six percent increase overall for tax collection.
Questions for the finance director? Seeing none? Okay. So if there are no more questions, I would like to thank Tina Filbrick for lunch today. Thank you, Tina, for all that work, and with that, we will be adjourned. If you have any questions, we ask that you submit them through the town administrator so that he can distribute them and the answers to everyone, so that we're all on the same page. Thank you very much, have a great day.
Thank you.